Good evening. Welcome to our regular meeting. This is July 13th. Thank you for your patience. We apologize for starting a few minutes late. We were in closed session handling some student matters. We are now back in open session. I'd like to call our meeting to order and turn to Board Member Pat Tillman to open us up. Thank you. We are now at public comments. We are glad that we have an opportunity to have our public join us in this way. Would like to remind the board what we decided about how we were going to do this, how the names were chosen, and we will have 30 minutes of public comments. And as our folks are coming in and as people come to the podium, I think I will have to remind each one because they are not going to be here in a lineup. So I'm just thinking about that. So our first speaker is Stephen Koviak. Okay, the second speaker is Cynthia Hammer. And the third is Pastor Dion Clark. Maybe she should have the sheet so she can... Oh, she has. Okay. Maybe to kind of let folks know so we can see who's here. So Board Members, about 30 minutes or 32 minutes would be about 6:45. So is that okay that we will end public comments around 6:45? By the time they get in and we remind them of the process, it'll be around 6:15. No. I don't know. Yeah, we'll just keep going down the list. Is that on the list? Okay. That's not Cynthia Hammer, is it? Okay. They think they're trying to round everybody up that will be speaking, maybe? Oh, no, no. These are the people that were already going to be in the room. Yeah, it's 6:15. Tamara, is she getting them lined up? Do you know? Yeah. Oh, no, I was just wondering if Nora's been able to find our first speaker. Okay. That's okay, Tamara. Dr. Contreras was saying that process of just getting wanded in, going through the screening and the temperature check. Thank you. So we'll have to extend our 30 minutes. Yeah. We need to be prepared. Especially like next to, for real. You, yours. You have to move. Because if you move... I know. We just had our first neighborhood meeting yesterday. It's great. Dion Clark. Thank you. Pastor Dion Clark, welcome. Just a friendly reminder, we'd like you to state your name and address. This will not count against your time. You have three minutes to speak. When you have 15 minutes left, you will see an amber light. When your time is up, you will see a red light. And please refrain from identifying and naming any staff or student as it is confidential.
Okay, you told me I had 15 minutes. I'm a preacher. You can't tell me.
I said you have three minutes. I'm sorry. Now you got even more to work with.
Don't tell the preacher that I'll have three closes and I'll be done. No, I'm joking.
Okay.
I'm Pastor Dion Clark. I live at 2 Oakville Court, McLeansville, North Carolina, in McLeansville. I'm here tonight. Thank you for having me, Dr. Contreras and Dina. Thank you, Board. I'm here tonight because simply I am frustrated. I'm appalled. I think it is ridiculous that we, as a community, as a town, even as a board, are not standing behind our superintendent. We understand what critical race theory has brought to the nation, not just to our county. But we can't control the nation, but we can control what happens right in our front yard. This is our front yard. This represents our families, our students, and this represents our superintendent. And the truth of the matter is, just because our superintendent hasn't spoke doesn't mean she doesn't have strength. Silence is a source of great strength. African-American females are disrespected. They're disrespected in leadership. They're disrespected on platforms, and they don't have the respect. And I am here tonight to demand the respect from the community, from the Board members, from those who are in this room, from those who are outside, that she deserves respect. She should not be treated unfairly. She should not be criticized to a point as far as race because we understand that race is not her ammo. She does not operate in race. She operates in real. And we also have to understand that we should exalt and build her up. We don't have to agree with everything, but we can show respect. So what I'm asking, those of you Board members, respect. Community, respect. She's not going anywhere. She's here. She's part of the community. She has support of the clergy. I've talked to them. We are supporting her, and we are here. We're standing here. So I'm asking those of you who are here to stand with us, support her because this cannot be tolerated. Threats on a superintendent life in this year and this time should not be acceptable, and no one should agree with that. And so I'm here tonight just to let y'all know that just because she's silent don't mean we're going to remain silent. Silent isn't empty. It's full of answers. And we're going to keep going until we get the answers, till we get the respect. And I'm here to tell you, Dr. Contreras, you have our support. We're here standing with you, and you've come a long way, and we appreciate what you do. And we're not going anywhere. We'll keep fighting until it's time and till we win. Thank you.
Thank you. Misty Reagan. Thank you, Ms. Reagan. As you're approaching the podium, just want to remind you to state your name and address before beginning to speak. You have three minutes to speak. When you have 15 minutes left, you will see an amber light. When your time is up, you will see a red light. And please refrain from identifying students and staff by name as confidentiality laws apply. Thank you.
Sure. I'm Misty Reagan. I am from Southern Guilford Community, Isle of Burnett Drive. Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Does that know?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to meet you all face to face finally and discuss some of the current challenges our school system is facing. But honestly, after going through the detailed security process just to enter the boardroom, I see there are more concerning issues at hand. Now, don't get me wrong, the safety of everyone in this boardroom is definitely important. But what about our children? Between 2018 and 2021, Guilford County Schools has been granted at least $10.8 million, not including annual funding provided by DPI specifically for purpose of school safety. So where's the money been spent? Why is the purchased one-card system not being mandated in all our schools? Do all GCS schools have fully functioning cameras? Is the district compliant with safety laws? Where is the current school safety director? I've been trying to contact Andrew Jasper with no response. We have 41 days until the students return to GCS school facilities. Will they all be required to show a photo ID like I was tonight? Will there be officer support outside the building as well as inside the building like there is tonight? Have metal detectors been installed in each GCS school like there has been tonight? Or is it going to take dead kids to get your attention? Fix it. And if you really want to know what's going on and what we can expect coming in our school system, you may want to check out Why Metal Died.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Trudy Delling. Ms. Delling, did you hear what I said as you're getting ready to make your comments?
I'm Cindy Hammer. I was first.
Okay.
I guess the line got missed up. Yes, I did hear what you said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Cindy Hammer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in the Page District in Greensboro.
Okay.
As I walked into this meeting...
Can we get your name? Did you give your address?
Do I need to get my full address?
Your name and address.
Okay. Cindy Hammer, 2404 Philadelphia Lake Court, Greensboro.
Thank you.
As I walked into this meeting this evening, I could not help but notice all the wonderful security you have in place. You have a guard at the door, metal detectors, an identification check, and police officers out in the parking lot. How safe you all must feel. What a privilege it is to have such a secure place for you to gather and meet. I was wondering why the children of Guilford County do not have the same privileges. There have been guns found in our schools that could have been stopped if they had metal detectors. There could have been countless incidents that could have been prevented if there were guards at the front door and police officers in the parking lot like you get to experience tonight. I'm asking you why you get these privileges and our children do not. If your answer is that you do not have the financial resources to support this most important cause, I have a few more questions regarding your financial resources and financial responsibilities. Why would your priority be to spend $432,878 on fixing up this very boardroom over the safety of our children? You have spent $420,000 in the last three years for the suspension program known as NAIROP, where those funds go to one particular church. I would like to know, where is the line item detailed report and the data that supports these expenses versus results? As well as, why is this one church repeatedly given these large amounts of funds? Are other churches eligible to host this program as well? And why during the pandemic, when there were virtually no suspensions, was this in-person program even funded? Why are you focusing on spending $35 million on training facility before you solve the safety and security issues that are currently in our existing schools? In closing, I would like to ask directly, who is responsible for the safety and security of our children? When Dr. Contreras was asked directly by the county commissioner what she was doing to make sure the children are safe in our schools, her response is follows, and I quote, speaking in the third person as herself, quote, "You know Sharon Contreras isn't responsible for all the safety in this county. That's first. I work for a board. I want to make that clear." End quote. There is a tremendous gap in the security and safety in our schools. If it's not fixed, it's going to leak, end up in lethal consequences. Yet you spend your time ensuring there is policy committee, which Dr. Contreras liaisons, which will enable her to spend freely. I want to know, is there a committee for safety? Is Dr. Contreras on the safety committee? Why is safety not your priority? Why have you not fixed this gap by now? Fix it.
Thank you. Trudy Delling. Ms. Delling, as you're approaching the podium, please give your name and address before you begin to speak. It will not count against your time. You have three minutes, and when you're... You have 15 minutes left, you'll see an amber light, and when your time is up, you'll see a red light.
Sorry. Trudy Ann Delling, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here tonight to talk about the systematic bullying of our staff and students. I believe our children are being bullied into thinking or being taught hate and division, that according to their skin color, they are either the oppressors or the oppressed, and therefore born to be the victim. Being taught you are a victim as a child is the worst form of evil and abuse. And it is just not so. Our own Mark Robinson was born and raised in Greensboro, who is a wise and godly black man and as a lieutenant governor of our state and who cares about all of us. GCS employees have been, have for years been forced to go to diversity training. But you cannot teach kindness. I have been, I have been working, I have worked at the front office, employee of GCS, and seen many examples of pure compassion. In one instance, a child who had a fever came to the office, a black child, the office worker, a white woman, who could not reach a parent to pick the child up. So the office worker worked with the rest of the day at her desk with a sick child, fast asleep in her lap. This was not something she was paid to do and certainly was not taught that in diversity training, CRT, or whatever else you want to call it next year. The following year, that same child told that same office worker he hated white people. Where did he learn that? I ask you, stop dividing our children and teaching them to hate. Stop making our children hate themselves and question their own value. Stop screwing up the basics that our children lack and so desperately need. Instead, teach our children basic math so they can count change without a register telling them what change they need. Teach our children how to write script so they can read a letter or sign their name to a contract. Yes, slavery was an accepted practice many years ago, all over the world, and still is now. But because America's Declaration of Independence, written by the same people whose statues were torn down last year because of a lack of knowledge of our country's history, teach them never to forget that thousands of young men, not much older than themselves, died horrible deaths in the Civil War, both white and black, standing beside one another to end slavery. Teach them that on 9/11, the same people they disrespect ran into the towers, knowing they could die doing so. Teach them all American men and women are free to make better lives, lives for themselves than the next generation, than the generation before them because we are a free nation. Teach our children so they are not manipulated by race baiters that would like nothing more than to divide us. I am not a racist, and trust me, my own family is a rainbow of many colors. And I can also assure you, you do not know me, and white privilege has never been given to my family. Never forget, if people of Guilford County are silent and compliant, we are giving GCS consent to teach divisive hate to our most innocent, impressionable, and vulnerable. Every adult in this county must and should be expected to protect our children from this poison. And I have one more question. Are we, are you considered racist because you asked us to all have IDs before we walked in tonight? That's what I would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Richard Herman. Excuse me, excuse me. When we are in support of what someone's saying, we'd like you to express yourself by doing that so that we can continue to allow people to speak. Richard Herman.
Thank you. I'm Richard Herman, and I live at 901 Jennifer Lane in High Point, North Carolina. I'm a teacher here at GCS, associate's teacher. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me to speak to you and bring up an inequity in our current local teacher supplement pay scale. This past month, Guilford County Commissioners passed the full budget, which I think is the first time that's ever happened, a recommendation for Dr. Contreras and the school board. And one of the approved funding requests was more money to go to Guilford County Schools could be more, so they would be more competitive in the area of local teacher supplements. All Guilford County Schools' teachers are greatly appreciative of this effort. I'm speaking here tonight so when the new local supplement pay scale is created, it will not contain punitive pay cuts during a teacher's time of service. I have made copies of the current teacher pay scale, and you'll take a look at them. I've handed them to the right folks. Guilford County Schools decided years ago that when a teacher gains experience and receives a step pay increase from the North Carolina Teachers Pay Scale, Guilford County Schools lowers the amount it pays for our local supplement. This simply should not take place. A first-year teacher will make $35,000 from the state, as we stand now, $5,000 from Guilford County Schools. For the next 21 years, those same teachers will lose $9,675 of their local teacher supplement because it's reduced those years. I guess this was put in place because from year 0 to 15, a teacher will receive a $1,000 a year increase each year. And teachers would not notice their local supplement would be decreased. I just completed my 25th year teaching service. As a reward for this, the North Carolina State Teacher Pay Scale has granted me and all teachers the same number of services and experienced a $2,000 a year rate increase. Guilford County Schools, however, seems to believe that I'm more valuable as a teacher at 24 years than 25 years. At 24 years, my local supplement is $5,590 a year. But as I get a raise from the state, Guilford County Schools lowers my supplement, low local supplement, to $4,950 a year. That is a $640 a year cut. So my actual pay increase is $1,360 a year, not to $2,000. I would have to work another 10 years and get to 34 years of experience to receive a Guilford County School local supplement that is equal or higher than what I currently have right now. That year, I would be back at a higher supplement than I was at year 24. This decision cost me $2,830. What I'm asking you fine folks to do, because I don't think y'all had anything to do with that pay scale, is when you make the new pay scale, try not to have reductions in it. Okay? And I appreciate, I appreciate your time that you guys have given me. And I just want to see if you can kind of come up with a system that rewards experience and productivity.
Thank you. And thank you for what you do for our kids.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Andrew Clark. Followed by Sheri Weisch.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sheri Weisch. And while I am a member of the Guilford Education Alliance Project Leadership Team, I'm first a member of this community and a future GCS parent. So I would like to thank the Board for their time tonight in these few minutes to speak. I want to start off by thanking Dr. Contreras. Your steadfast leadership is amazing. The level of hate that the, and the personalization of attacks, emails, and phone calls that you've received must be exhausting, and it's incredibly difficult to endure, I'm sure. Your strength is admirable, and as a woman of color, your representation matters so much. I want with the bulk of my remarks to be a shout-out to you, the hard-working teachers and district employees and other school members that work in this district. Maybe you haven't heard this yet, but just today, GCS was featured in the Heckinger Report for their innovative approach to tutoring, using high school and local university students as well as the community members as paid tutors. This research base and high-quality level of support will no doubt pay dividends for students. I look forward to seeing how far this will go. Another impressive fact to note is that in the midst of a global pandemic, the class of 2021 in GCS earned a record-high number of scholarship dollars, totaling $190 million, and had a graduation rate of more than 89%. Another fact, with 738 nationally-board certified teachers, GCS ranks the 10th in the nation. Our community, our community is proud to support Guilford County Schools. In fact, we voted to pass $300 million, $300 million school facilities bond with over 73% of voter approval, even in a very divided political climate. I want to close by saying this. The mission of Guilford County Schools and this Board cannot, I repeat, cannot be put aside by a few loud voices with the divisive agenda. The real and critical business of GCS is educating children, no matter the color of their skin, no matter their residential income, their zip code, their religion, their sexuality. Their mission is too, too important to be derailed. And there are many, many community members and families and organizations behind you and support of you. And I came here today to let you know this. Thank you again to the Board for your time. Thank you for allowing us to speak. And thank you for all that you're doing to keep the community members, students, teachers, and staff safe.
Thank you, Ms. Weisch. Next is Mary Herbennick, followed by Susan Tyzinger. Again, please give your name and address. It will not count against your time. Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Mary Herbennick, and I live at 2403 Walker Avenue here in Greensboro. I'm so happy to see all of you tonight. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm a proud parent of a recent Grimsley High School graduate and of a rising junior who's also at Grimsley. Both of my daughters have attended GCS since kindergarten, and we remain grateful as a family for the excellent and holistic education that they've received. My children enter the next phase of their lives well-prepared as a result of their Guilford County Schools' education with their fellow students, their teachers, their coaches, their school counselors, and school administrators. During our time as a GCS family, I've watched educators and staff pour themselves into a few hundred thousand students across this district, showing up each and every day to help our kids learn, grow, and become better versions of themselves. There's so much for you as the leaders of the school system to be proud of. There's so much for you as the leaders of the school system to be proud of. I especially want to thank you and GCS staff for your tireless work over the past 16 months while navigating a global pandemic and all that went with it. Your leadership, Dr. Contreras, has been exemplary. As a parent, I've been a GCS volunteer and advocate for more than a decade. I've witnessed lots of differences of opinions and disagreements over the years about how to best educate our children. I have never been more concerned, and quite frankly, appalled, at the vitriol that's been spewed at our superintendent and educators by a handful of extremists. They don't speak for me, they don't speak for my neighbors, they don't speak for my children, and they don't speak for the vast majority of families in this district who support public schools, our teachers, principals, and staff. Instead of manufacturing a crisis and threatening our educators, may I suggest that you find another hobby? There are so many positive things that need to be done and that need to be contributed in this district and elsewhere, something that brings you peace. The extremists may be loud, but we can't and won't be distracted because there's important work to do. Our teachers and staff continue to serve thousands of children right now this summer to make sure that they're ready to soar in the coming school year. There are school buildings to be constructed, service learning hours to be logged, skills to be mastered, and scholarships to be won. Futures are being built. We cannot not for one minute take our eyes off the prize of giving our community's children the best possible start in life and preparing them for a future that we adults can't even conceive of at this very moment. If we work together and center our children, all of our children, this vision is achievable. And if we don't, it's to our detriment and to theirs. So a huge thanks to you and to the 10,000 Guilford County Schools' team members for continuing to be a connection for students, families, and the community, and for paying attention to what really matters. Let's forget the rest of it.
Thank you. Susan Tyssinger, followed by Kevin Gray.
Good evening, school board members. I'm here to ask you to please do your job. Your bylaws, per Article 2, Section 2.3, state, "The job of the board is to represent the citizens and the taxpayers to lead the district by setting policy and requiring excellent organizational performance." Your June 16 vote giving one person overreaching latitude to spend our tax dollars without board approval does not represent me or other taxpayers, whether dollars are local, state, or federal, whether they are taxes, grants, or other. Then, when asked to approve the GCS budget in order to send it to the state, you let it slip the state that had already received and approved it without prior approval by the board, totally unprecedented. Your bylaws also state, "The board will concentrate its efforts on determining and using proactive strategies to ensure constructive two-way dialogue between the board and the students, staff, parents, and community about issues, hopes, and goals related to public education and the school system." I'm not feeling that constructive two-way dialogue. When you put this policy out for public comment for 30 days, very few people even knew about this undemocratic policy. Perhaps it was made public in sites that people seldom visit. Then why did you choose to ignore the close to 70 comments you did receive as 90% were against, 3% were for? Transparency, representing the citizens? I think not. The public comment move was merely an act. Per Article 4.2, under duties and powers of the chairman, the chair is to ensure that board meeting deliberations are fair, open, and thorough. This duty was certainly not evident on May 10, when board members were denied the request to discuss the new policy that had been proposed, a committee which includes the superintendent. A policy of this magnitude should have been opened up for discussion by the whole school board. Further, as the superintendent, that she is not a member of the school board, so why is she a member of the subcommittee? Then we know how that all turned out. On June 10, the majority of you voted your conscience, rejecting this absurd policy. Then, I'm not really sure what happened on June 17, but we, the citizens of Guilford County, obviously did not matter. And if common sense doesn't soon take over, when we get on down the road and you realize that you are not a representative body and you have no power over anything concerning the education of our valuable children, just remember, it happened on your watch. Every day, I will continue to pray that God will fill you with wisdom. Fix it.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Gray, followed by David Miller.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Gray, and my wife and I reside in Greensboro, and I'd like to say thank you to everybody tonight. Haven't heard what everybody said, so this one's probably going to be on the lighter side, maybe. We're the proud parents of two recent Guilford County School graduates, one from Page High School and one from Weaver Academy. The Page graduate has completed her post-secondary studies and is now gainfully employed, so thank you very much for that. The Weaver graduate finishes her post-secondary studies soon and will join us in the workforce. Guilford County Schools' teachers, coaches, administrators, ACE's staff, school support staff, all had a hand in preparing our daughters for not only higher education, but by instilling in them solid life skills, independent thinking, and a determined work ethic. So again, thank you. Got a theme going here. In the years of our experience with Guilford County Schools, I've had the fortune of being able to volunteer. And in my professional career, I've had the fortune to interact, work, and serve with many Guilford County School employees, including some of you. I've always been impressed by the dedication and the passion of teachers and others to challenge students to be independent thinkers and to strive to do their best and not to force their beliefs on any student. So thank you for that. At no time have I ever witnessed students being forced to think a certain way or being taught any particular ideologies, never. They've always been taught to be independent thinkers, critical thinkers, using discernment as a learning tool. And frankly, as an engaged parent looking out for my child's welfare, I would assume that I would know if they were being taught in such a way. As our nation wrestles with its complex and comprehensive history, and our schools wrestle with the ideas of the what and how to teach our children, I do hope there will be more comprehensive teachings of history and other such lessons. And as the information is taught, to also to continue to teach children how to analyze that information, become critical, independent thinkers about the receipt of that information and how to draw their own conclusions. Teachers teach, not preach. I simply wanted to stand here on our first night back as a community and say thank you. Thank you for working hard the last 18 months in the most trying of circumstances, and thank you for tackling the unknowns, and thank you for continuing to work hard when faced with unrealistic critics. And finally, thank you for your dedication and passion moving forward.
Thank you. Next up is David Miller, and I think we will probably be at our time after that. David Miller's not here, Blake Odom.
Hello, everyone. Blake Odom, 800 Revolution Mill Drive, Greensboro. I don't have necessarily a speech prepared tonight like I have in the past, but I am here as my grandmother taught me as a young boy to cry loud and spare not. I'm here tonight as I've been keeping up with things. I think everybody on this board knows that I like you, but I love our children. When I decided to run for Board of Education back in November, I ran with the intent that we needed a voice on the inside of education, serving on our school board. I'm here tonight because it was Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King who called Greensboro "the epicenter of the civil rights movement." He called Greensboro that. And when you think about the capacity in which you serve on the Board of Education, that's a heavy responsibility. When you have the greatest civil rights leader of all times to call your city, your county, the greatest, the epicenter of the civil rights movement, that's a heavy task. So I won't get into critical race theory, but what I will say is there is a lot of misinformation that is being spread, and Dr. Contreras is right. She works for the Board of Education. I heard the lady say earlier, Dr. Contreras said, "It's not my responsibility alone, I work for the Board of Education." That is the truth. And as board members, it's our responsibility to relay the truth to those who we represent. I also want to say that I noticed that on the agenda, we're having another discussion about emergency powers for the superintendent, when every superintendent in the state of North Carolina has those emergency powers. Why is it that we continue to find ways to make your employee, her job, more difficult? I won't even get into the news that came out that she had to have security, because many of us get on these Facebook forums spreading misinformation as elected officials, so much so to the point that the superintendent has to have security because people are threatening her and the board chair. It is unacceptable. The last thing that I'm going to say, my grandmother said, "When you tell only half of a story, that story becomes a lie." We have to do a better job as a board. And you know, I ran one time, I'm not afraid to run again. I'm not afraid to organize people to run who are going to support what we're doing in this county, moving this county forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I was informed we only have two speakers left. I know our 30 minutes is up, but it is up to you if you want to, since there are only two, not five or 10. Everybody's okay with that? All right. Who are the two speakers left? What was the last name?
Schlomer.
Schlomer, Erin Schlomer?
Correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Please give your name and address.
Erin Schlomer, 5831 Greem Town Road, High Point. I wanted to thank you today for accelerating our country into a new age of enlightenment. Due to your radical Marxist policies and curriculum, parents of all ages, ethnicities, socioeconomic backgrounds, races, et cetera, are coming together to protect our children here in Guilford County at an alarming speed. Churches are filling, and new friendships are forming in spite of your racist and divisive teachings. Because of folks like you, Guilford County is becoming a mecca for Christianity, homeschooling communities, and a return to family-first mentality. The future looks bright for our rebirth, a revival of American patriotism. Out of America's darkest times came some of our bravest and most consequential leaders. MLK changed our entire country. Clarence Henderson, right here in Guilford County, changed America. And now, with the situation at hand, we have Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson. America will prevail, and we'll be stronger and more united as ever because of some of the policies you're making. So I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you. And our last speaker? Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Cherry Pickett, 7804 Robinson Road in Summerfield. And I have seven grandchildren in the Guilford County Public Schools, and I have two concerns right now. The first one is to remove the mask from their beautiful faces, and the second one is safety for them and all the children in the schools. I'm going to tell you a short story. We adopted a, I can see the numbers here, we adopted a three-year-old little boy, precious from foster care. His mom was homeless, and I think she was doing drugs, too. His dad was incarcerated, so nevertheless, he had some issues. He was not afraid of anything. He would run out the door, and he would just go, go, and go. He didn't care, he wasn't afraid. He did not want to be told what to do. He wouldn't listen. It was very difficult to discipline him. So even at five years old, he did not want to hear the word "no." If you told him "no," he would do whatever it took to find out how to get what he wanted. So at age 10, he was diagnosed with ADHD and oppositional defiance. And when I say oppositional, he did everything. He was opposed to everything. So we went through counselors, we went to doctors, we went to the ADHD clinic at UNCG, we went through all kinds of classes and training, medications. We finally found a medication to get him through school. So as he aged, at 14, he refused to take his medication anymore. He said he did not need it. He said he was fine. Well, then, that's when he began to get into a lot of trouble at school. We went through five schools trying to find a fit for him. And I knew he was intelligent and that he could do it, but he did learn to read and write and math and all those things that he needed to know, but he was getting into a lot of trouble. So when he reached middle school, I was almost called daily into school to have a session with all his teachers, the counselors, and everybody. Nothing was working, except I will tell you that the only person that could get him in line was a police officer. Police officers have that authority, they are trained, they know exactly what to do in certain situations. And my son had been in jail, and he knew he did not want to go back. So he would listen to the police officers. So my request is that SROs are very much needed in the schools. It helped my son. He's 22, and he's doing much better, but he had to be in jail a few times to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. And board members, I'm sorry, but we had more than two speakers. There are people that have signed up that are in the room, and they were not counted. So there are people that have been allowed to stay in the board meeting, but they were not counted. So when I said we only had two speakers left, we actually had people that were on the list, but they were already in the room as an attendee. I'm not sure. There's one, two, three, four, five, six people that are already in the room as an attendee that were not counted because they weren't lined up. Well, that's up to the board to do them now or later. It could be as many as six. I can see how many there are. Betty?
I've been motioned that we do the hearings, I'm sorry, the speeches right now before we go into another session. If we can do it now?
I don't know if we need a motion, do we, Jill? So what's a consensus there? I can just call and see how many there are, but there will be as many as six and could be fewer. All right, so John Moyles, Cheryl Beeson, Julie Peoples, Allison Baumgartner, Melissa Graves, and Cheryl Beeson. Can you raise your hand if you're in here? So all five of them are here. Two, three, four, five. All right, John Moyles, first on the list. Please give your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. When you see the amber light, you will have 15 seconds left. When you see the red light, your time is up. Please do not mention any staff or student by name, as confidentiality laws apply. Yeah, and Cheryl Beeson's next, Reverend Julie Peoples.
My name is John Moyles. I live at 3901 Battleground, number 54, in Greensboro. And I had prepared remarks. I think I'm going to make it much briefer than that. I listened to what other people had to say this evening, and what I really want to say, I'm here because I believe that we are very fortunate to have our that we are very fortunate to have our superintendent, Dr. Contreras. I think she does an excellent job for us. I've listened to a lot of the objections that are made. And what I'll say about that is, I worked for about forty years in the high-tech startup businesses, which is um, well, let's just say, uh, you work hard and you don't stop. And I managed people in that environment. And one of the things I learned is that the only way to effectively manage people in complicated situations is to find good people and let them do their jobs. And we seem to do pretty well with that. I really don't understand many of the objections that are being raised. I heard people say that they don't think the board represents the people. I think every board member was elected in a democratic election, and I assume that those people are representing the people that elected them. I'm, I, I may be missing something, but it's, democracy is a tricky thing. Right? I was pretty young when I realized that no matter what I thought, no matter what I thought was right, there were a lot of people who didn't agree with me, and some of them actually got elected to office. But what I also learned is if you live in a democracy, you go with the rules. That's how it works. You participate in the system. And I have confidence that the people in the Board of Education are doing the right thing. And we ought to just leave it at that. There will be more elections, and if people are unhappy, they can make changes. But I don't think that it's appropriate. I, this whole business about extending the uh, and I'm not really sure their spending allowances, but extending Dr. Contreras' authority. To me, it was exactly the right thing. They sound like large amounts, but compared to the budget, they're really not. And they involve a lot of details, and we ought to just let her do her job. Okay? And if somehow we all end up bankrupt, well, so be it. But I can't even imagine that that's going to happen. And so all I really wanted to say this evening is that the, the Chair, Dina Hayes Green, and Dr. Contreras, you have my full confidence.
Thank you. Cheryl Beeson, followed by Reverend Julie Peoples.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Beeson, three-eight-six-eight, Eagleston Court in High Point, North Carolina. As Guilford County Schools, along with much of the nation, deals with the current American history curriculum concerns, I decided to ask some high school students what their thoughts about the current efforts to make it illegal for schools to teach about racism, privilege, power, gender issues, among other social justice-related topics. It is, after all, their education, along with thousands of others across Guilford County, that will be impacted. The first student would like us to know that by not teaching us as students about any topic dealing with these social justice issues, you're making it harder for everyone to understand each other. As a Hispanic-American student, he totally disagrees with sanitizing American history because he says that would prevent me from understanding others from different backgrounds. Sometimes I see how some people look down on me and people of my Hispanic family. But what can I do to change that? That is why teaching about Americans' racial history at school will take us all a step closer to helping more people understand and respect each other. That is the only way I am sure change can happen. The second student I spoke with sends us this message. He would like schools to quote, "Teach us as children so that we can cope with what is already happening to us. We are experiencing it now. We cannot hide from it. We are growing up and figuring out how to fit into a society. We need all the information and understanding we can, because social justice issues are engulfing our world." In ninth grade, this student was able to take an Amer- an African-American history class at his high school. And he reports that that one course in the ninth grade changed his whole world. He says, "I learned so much that helped me to see my place in the world, and I want all students to have access to that kind of knowledge and understanding." Our third student, a young woman, encourages support for teachers who facilitate instruction and student dialogue about all social justice issues, because otherwise, quote, "You are creating a horrible environment where it is okay for these injustices to occur. If we do not address these issues, people will begin to think these problems are no big deal, rather than acknowledging them as problems that need to be fixed." I have only a little bit to add to the wisdom of these three students, and that is, as a forty-year veteran of public schools, thirty of those in Guilford County, North Carolina, I assure you that our students in 2021 can handle the truth of America's greatness and its failures. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Reverend Julie Peoples, followed by Allison Baumgartner?
Thank you. I'm Julie Peoples. I live at twenty-two oh one Villa Drive here in Greensboro. And I am glad to speak and to include uh I, that I am representing members of the Greensboro Faith Leaders Council, who represent tens of thousands of faith community folks in this community. The elementary school I attended a very long time ago had a unique grading system. E, V, G, P, and F were used instead of the A, B, C's. The letter stood for failing, passing, good, very good, and the E stood for excellence. Thank you, Dr. Contreras. Thank you, board members, staff, and teachers, for striving for excellence every day on behalf of all children. Achieving excellence takes all of us, parents, grandparents, guardians, taxpayers, business leaders, faith community members, elected officials. Achieving excellence requires that adults act as mature and responsible role models for our children. Targeting board and staff with hate-filled racist emails and phone messages, banging on windows and screaming at school employees tells children that adults are incapable of dealing with disagreements. With any modicum of respect, it is reprehensible. Achieving excellence requires the act of dismantling of bigotry in all its forms. This crucial work cannot be done by hiding or distorting or denying the past. It can only be achieved by courageously facing the past and recognizing how the legacy of white supremacy lives on in our institutions, procedures, and halls of power. I have heard those who oppose the removal of Confederate statues speak passionately against what they call erasing of history, their fear of losing what they call their heritage. In fact, for generations, those of us who are white have been erasing the actual history and heritage of Black Americans and Indigenous people. If our nation is indeed worth our loyalty and service, it is surely strong enough to welcome the full truth, the whole story. It is worth our shared efforts to make it all it can be. Our schools can play a critical role in this, but only if we demand that honest and full accounting. The schools I attended so long ago did not teach me the true history of this nation. To this day, I am still learning, still filling in the huge gaps of what was purposely omitted. I do not want my grandchildren to receive a partial education. I want them to receive an education marked by excellence, a fearless, honest account of this country's history, a clear understanding of what it means to be a citizen of this country in light of that account, and a solid commitment to continuing to make this country a home of liberty and justice for all. That indeed would be excellence. Again, I am so grateful for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Baumgartner, final, followed by our final speaker, Melissa Graves.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Allison Baumgartner, three-one-two Murray Street, Greensboro. And I did not think I was going to be speaking, but I have an email that I shared with you all, and um we'll echo some of those messages that I shared. And first, just want to say thank you to you all. Thank you to Dr. Contreras and um Chairperson Dina Hayes for your leadership and that um that we need you. We need all of our board members who continue to be um champions for all of our children for teaching uh true and accurate history in our schools. Um, similar to other speakers, growing up, I didn't um experience an education through K through twelve where I learned about true and accurate history. I um, it was uh centered on a white person's uh view of history. And now, in my thirties and through college and through graduate school, um, reading and learning and having conversations and taking workshops and classes, and it's been phenomenal, and I've been learning, but we can do that. We can do better. And it can start um with young children. They're capable of learning about difference, about our history, about race, about racism. And um we see it, we see it in the work that I do. Um, they're capable of uh learning about fairness, about celebrating diversity and inclusion. And it's a benefit to all of us. It's a benefit to white families. It's a benefit to all of our children. So I just want to say thank you for um continuing that in our schools, and I hope to see more of it because um it's an experience that I wish, wish I had and that I've benefited from um now as an adult. Um, and something that, for me, um in my experiences, learning about race and racism and true history um increased my empathy, my curiosity. I believe those classes in graduate school where I learned about um all history, African-American history, about um immigration and um uh the vast history that we have, um the failings of our country. In a, in a lot of ways, um the mystics that have been made. It made me into a better person, um increasing my critical thinking skills and my relationships um with people similar to me and my background or people that are different from me and theirs. And so um I just uh appreciate um the opportunity to speak and appreciate you all taking time out of your day with your families and communities to be here and to um provide a service uh for us all. So um, and I also just want to say that with all of this good, that hateful and threatening messages toward um anyone in our community, including our leadership, um it's, it's not okay. I know we know that, but um, you know, hostility, threatening messages, it's um very sad to see and it's unacceptable. And our children do see that, and it, it harms them and it harms our community. And so I'm, I just hope that our community here can come together on that point that we need to treat each other better. So we do need culturally responsive education for um many of those reasons, and it can bridge a divide, not create one. So thank you all, and thank you for your, your continued leadership and time and um passion for our children. And thanks for being a champion for all of our kids.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Melissa Graves.
Name and address, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Melissa Graves, uh, Eight Spring Oak Drive. Mr. Tillman, you represent me. Greensboro, North Carolina. Uh, good evening. Um, I'm today speaking on, as a parent, first of all, because I do volunteer in the school and spend lots of time in the school, but I'm speaking as a parent today on behalf of myself and my family. I first like to thank you all for your service during probably one of the most challenging times of all of our lifetimes. You stayed the course, and you did the best you could under extraordinary circumstances and under mounds and mounds of pressure, including probably a little bit for me, because as you may all remember that I'm a staunch advocate for in-person schools since the beginning of this all. But not one time have I been rude, disrespectful, out of line, unprofessional, completely crazy, and to any of you, even when I disagreed with your positions, I've never been that way. And I'm sorry that unfortunately, a lot of people in this community has, and it's unfair, and it's embarrassing. The straight-up, purposeful lies, disrespect, and threats of violence is scary. I have been concerned for the mental health of the children. However, now I'm concerned with the mental health of some of these adults that's doing a lot of this craziness. And I think that is very serious, and I think that that needs to be uh taken very serious, because some of these people crazy, and it's making me terrified. And I, I'm worried about all of you all, but more importantly, Dr. Contreras, it's embarrassing, and we support you, we respect you, and I wish I could be your security guard detail, but I work full-time and I can't. But just know that you are not alone, and there are people out here that are supporting you that you don't even know about. So I just need you to know that. So don't be scared, don't come out with your head up, because we are proud, prouder than you can ever imagine. So I just want to say that. And um I also want to say that a single school district cannot combat a national propaganda machine that's intent on pushing a big lie, a particular narrative, and driving wedges in communities. And it saddens me that some people would banish the truth and elevate a lie. There is already a shortage of educators, and these cultish, conspiracy-theory-laden lies are going to cause an even, an even bigger exodus among an already scarce recruiting field in education. I hope this does not happen with our leaders here in GCS. It's a difference between free speech and expression and outright lies, conspiracy theories, and threats. Is that three minutes already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But um, thank you all for your service to this community, and it is a service, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, board, and um the public. We were able to get everyone in. We are now at our consent agenda. Thank you. Oh, that's right, we're at approval of the whole agenda.
Move the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that passes. Uh, Winston McGregor is um not with us this evening, so that passes unanimously. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Contreras?
Thank you. Good evening.
No, it's not on. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and welcome to the community. It's good to see you here. This evening's consent agenda includes several items. Those items are: A, approval of June twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes; B, the personnel report; C, the twenty-twenty-one budget amendment transfers report; D, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two security and privacy liability insurance. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
So move.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we pull D, please?
Can we pull D?
No.
We don't have a second yet, ma'am. I'm sorry, we don't have a s- a second yet. So you want to pull item D. So is there a motion to move the consent agenda items I, A through C?
No.
Move the consent agenda.
Yours is A through D?
No, I'm accepting the whole consent agenda. I'm not changing my motion.
Okay, is there a s-
Is there a second?
She's asked for us to pull D, so we're, we can pull D. She has the right to have D pulled.
Okay, I thought we're supposed to pull items ahead of time.
Well, we asked that board members pull them ahead of time, but they're allowed to pull them at the meeting as well.
Okay.
So A through C? All right, so let's vote on A through C. Please use your electronic devices.
Chairman Hayes, if we split our vote, how do you want us to do that?
Okay, there you go. So we'll just go through, um, well, it's a consent agenda, so you can vote up or down. Yeah, so if you're gonna, if you want to pull something, we can pull it.
No, I don't want to pull it, but I don't want to vote against the whole thing.
Well, that's what we do.
In the past, we have been able to vote against specific items. Can we no longer do that?
If someone moves to approve the consent agenda, that means what's left on the consent agenda. So unless you remove something, your- So unless you remove something, you're voting for the consent agenda or against the consent agenda.
Okay, then I want to remove B and C. That's not how we have operated in the past.
It is. We voted on the consent agenda unless someone has asked to pull something from the consent agenda. We asked you to pull something when you get the agenda and then board members have been allowed to pull items at the meeting. So we are now at approval of A on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is that your motion, Diane?
Move D.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote for A. The consent agenda, item A. All right, that passes unanimously. Anita?
I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, I just wanted it pulled so I can vote no.
Okay, so items B and C on the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept?
Move items B and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. She was resetting the panel. Thank you. All right.
But you can do it.
Do we have to do it again for Pat to vote?
I'll vote the affirmative. I don't know if that's.
All right, so that passes by, vote of seven to one. All right, Diane, item D.
I'd just like for there to be some more clarity about exactly what our security and privacy liability insurance covers because what I read didn't quite help me understand. Is this to cover cybersecurity or is this to cover, what is it covering, please?
It is, it's our cybersecurity policy. We didn't have the finalized pricing when we brought this item to the Board in June, so that's why this one was delayed, but it is our cybersecurity.
Okay, all right. I just need a clarity on what it meant. So move item D.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of item D, please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. We are now at board discussion. Board member Anita Sharp has asked for two items, the superintendent's emergency powers for there to be board discussion. Ms. Sharp?
Yes. On March the 13th, 2020, we passed unanimously the following motion. Motion was made by Winston McGregor, seconded by Pat Tillman, that the Board authorized the superintendent to temporarily waive Board policies as necessary to implement appropriate response measures regarding potential risks and legal actions associated with COVID-19, with the understanding that the superintendent will keep the Board informed on any such actions. And it did, it was approved unanimously. That 16 months ago, we were in an emergency situation. We suspended all policies. I think even from the speakers who spoke tonight, who talk about what a good job the superintendent did during this 16 months of emergency situation, I agree. But I also believe that the intense emergency of COVID-19 is over. I think the fact that we are in this room together is an indication that the emergency aspect of COVID-19 is over. And I think it is time, you know, you've heard a lot of discussion about Policy DC, the financial policy. I'm not sure why we discuss that when the Board actually has no policies at this point in time. So I think it behooves the Board to reassume their responsibility when it comes to Board policies. And so therefore, I move that we rescind the motion that passed unanimously, March 13th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Diane? Is your mic on, Diane?
Okay.
There you go.
First of all, I think to say that the Board advocated its responsibility is a falsehood. What we did was simply in that particular situation because decisions were being made at state level and the federal level that were impacting on how we do business. If I recall, on March the 13th, which I believe was a Friday, we were still in school as we should, we were supposed to be. On March the 14th, if I remember correctly, which was a Saturday, the Governor shut everything down. And we had to, I think the new word is pivot, to deal with that. And the superintendent needed to be able to respond appropriately to that because Raleigh did not call us and say, would you like for us to close your schools? Raleigh did not say, oh, well, let me give you a playbook on how to do it. None of that was done. And this, this odd notion that we're out of the pandemic, no, we're not. COVID is still here. I just lost a friend on the 5th from COVID. Yes, some of us have been vaccinated, but a great number of our elementary school children can't be because they're not old enough to be. So the virus is still here. And if you've been watching, the numbers have started to tick back up again. And they're, they're predicted to possibly get worse before they get better again, which means that we may wind up being in November where we were in January. So I think it's foolhardy since there's no real reason, there hasn't been a misuse of power that I know of, the superintendent. Are you gonna let me talk or you want, you want, I'll give you the floor back.
I don't have my mic coming.
Well, but you're talking. So either you're gonna let me talk. Okay. There's been no misuse of power that I know of. The superintendent has made a Yaman's effort to make sure, in fact, in our packet, if you got it, were two of her last Board items to us. I think it's something like 22 pages of stuff. If you want to know what's been going on, you pick up the darn phone and call her and ask her, what are you doing? And anytime I've text her or called her and said, what are you doing? She didn't avoid me. She answered me or she would have staff, if I asked a question, get back with me. And you got to realize that trying to figure out how to run the school system in the midst of a pandemic, that there hasn't been the likes of it in 100 years. So there are no books written. And the fact that our school system has actually been a leader nationally, statewide, as far as dealing with this. I think it's disrespectful to say that we are needing to take away something that has not been abused, that is sort of like having car insurance. Most of us up here, I assume, are fairly good drivers, so we don't have to use our car insurance very often, but there's gonna be that time when you gonna tow to your car and you better have some car insurance or you gonna be walking. So why stop something that there's been no reason to stop it because there's been no abuse of using it? If anything, she's done and staff have done a tremendous job of leading this school system through this unprecedented time that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be helpful. It's been a while since I've been up here. I think it might be helpful, I mean, if someone could sort of enumerate, you know, what we're talking about specifically, like what, you know, what does that do for the district, you know, having the superintendent with these emergency powers? You know, in other school districts across the nation, in some ways, it's viewed as, in some ways celebratory that superintendents are either through the Board action or through their own efforts saying this is a sign that the pandemic is far behind us. And it is far behind us. I mean, no one's suggesting that we're not out of the woods, but I don't think anyone would suggest that. But I was just curious maybe if we could talk, if someone could share a little bit about specifically what the, those powers do versus where we were pre-pandemic, you know? Because I think it might be a good refresher because, gosh, I don't know about you, but I mean, a year with a pandemic, a year and a half feels like 10 years. And so it might be good just to refresh memories and rekindle, you know, what that, what that does.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. One thing that sticks with me that you asked at the last Board meeting was, what is the problem we're trying to solve by raising this issue, especially since no other school district is raising this question of their superintendent in the midst of a pandemic when there's another variant out and the numbers are increasing? So I'm just wondering why we're having the discussion in the midst of this. What's the problem we're trying to solve? But I will turn to Dr. Carr to just answer some of the issues about what could happen. I also want to make it very clear for the public, because the public has been misinformed repeatedly, I have never once used the emergency power, not one time. I brought every issue to this Board of Education and they voted on it. I have not superseded their role in policy, finances, every contract came forward, but there could be a time that I would have to quickly make a decision. That's why the superintendents in the state of North Carolina, not just Dr. Contreras, have this authority right now. Dr. Carr.
I'm still getting used to the new microphones. I apologize. So we are still, we are currently, unless something changes with a potential announcement tonight, but as of the start of the meeting, we are still operating under emergency orders issued by the Governor. So that's also what provides somewhat, provides the policy framework for this as well as, anyway, that provides the policy framework. Some of the issues that we're looking at moving forward with opening of schools and that we have staff working on right now, we are eagerly awaiting revisions to the Strong Schools North Carolina Public School Toolkit, which is issued by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. They actually put an update out July 9th, but of course, that was the same day the CDC issued new guidance regarding masking. And so clearly, they had not addressed the new guidance because they didn't, I don't think they knew that that was coming. So issues that we're looking at moving forward, certainly, we, only about 26% of teenagers right now in Guilford County, according to data provided to us earlier today from the Public Health Department, from their epidemiologist, are vaccinated against COVID-19, despite, as you know, Yaman efforts that we've been doing to try to encourage vaccination. So that's certainly a concern with schools opening around the corner. We also know that children under 12 don't even have the opportunity to be vaccinated yet. So what are some implications for that? If we ended up having a surge, if we ended up having to do last minute purchasing, you know, that occurred in between school board meetings, if we had to switch gears or, you know, we could, needed to change the policy and protocols according to the new guidance, which is, you know, the pattern last year, every time we issued what we thought were really good protocols and guidance, something changed at the state or federal level and we had to adjust our guidance again. We're anticipating that some of that will continue. So there's still, as much as we would all like the, this to be over, it's not over yet. And when you look at adults that in terms of vaccination rates, that's under 50% in Guilford County as well of eligible adults, not counting the 65 and older population, but more of the adults that would be our families, that would be our teachers and our employees. So both of those issues just pose concerns that could then yield issues that could come up regarding the need to change gears quickly or address a purchasing need very quickly and then having to report it back, you know, to the Board is, was the promise with the policy that came before. So it just, that's why from a staff and administration perspective, it feels premature when the pandemic isn't over yet.
Yeah, and as a follow-up, so, so is there a sort of finish line or is there a point where maybe, yeah, that we feel like, okay, the, Madam Superintendent, we're at that safe aha moment that then we'll just go back to pre-pandemic? Is there a goal or?
Yeah, in truth, I haven't used the powers and if you voted to take them away, I can live with that. At the same time, I think the key issue for us is that we're still under the Governor's emergency order. And I think that perhaps the, if you wanted to revise the motion, you should, the motion could be, as long as we're under Governor's emergency order, that these powers exist. And once that ends, then the power, then we revert back to pre-pandemic procedures.
Anita, would, would that suit a friendly amendment or?
I would make that, that amendment that we.
She made a motion. And Linda seconded it. Now we're having discussion.
I would make the friendly amendment to revise the language to reflect, as Madam Superintendent mentioned or said, that based on when North Carolina, when the Governor, when we go back to pre-pandemic, and then that would end the superintendent's emergency power.
So there's some other folks, Pat? And we can revisit that after they've spoken. So there's Kim, Betty, Deborah, and then Diane.
My concern is really about the ability, it's not about the resources that come that need to get to children faster. We have to remember the bottom line is being able, when the superintendent is able to act quickly, then principals are able to respond quickly. Everyone goes down to be able to respond to what's happening in education around our children. And I think even last year, because we responded quickly, I think with buying devices and being ahead of the curve, you know, and those things, we were put in a good place when it was time to receive those devices, even though they were delayed. So I'm all about empowering our superintendent so that principals can be empowered, so that students can get what they need. And that's very important, I think, to our role and responsibility as a Board. And again, I don't even know why we're having this conversation when other superintendents and we follow lots of times the culture of what's happening in North Carolina, other Boards are not having this conversation, other Boards don't seem to be worried about their superintendents, you know, being able to move quickly in these matters and not, you know, be handicapped in such a way for our students.
Thank you, Betty.
Well, I think almost all my questions were answered already, but I will ask Dr. Carr. I know we are still under the Governor's order, but how many, we are always comparing ourselves to the districts around us. How many superintendents so far that you know have been, power have been rescinded?
I'm just aware of one school district, and that was Wake County Public Schools. At the superintendent's request.
Okay, but the Board did not ask for it to be rescinded. It was her, or it was her request.
It was at the superintendent's request. I believe that occurred when they re-entered school in Plan A with, with more of their children.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deborah, Diane, and Anita.
First off, thank you, Dr. Contreras, for clarifying because I did want that, you know, made very open. I do remember this discussion having happened with the Board before Betty and I were sworn in and you mentioned then that you had not used your emergency powers. And. emergency powers. And I know just by following everything that's been going on, that since we have been sworn in, you have not used these emergency powers. I feel you've been very, frugal seems like the wrong word, very forthcoming, thank you, very forthcoming with what exactly you've been doing. So thank you very much for that, for the clarity. And also, you know, if you, if you're watching these meetings and you're watching what's going on, you can see that this board is fully functional. We get emails all the time, public comments about the Legislative Committee and their actions, the Policy Committee and their actions. These actions are brought to the board to vote on consistently. Nothing has been instituted that I'm aware of without a board vote. So the board is functioning fully as it should, and Dr. Contreras has not used these emergency powers. So I'm a little lost as to why it's a measure of concern if there, again, there's no issue of use, much less any issue of abuse. And finally, I do have to point out that a lot of the emails and public comments that are brought to us are things completely outside of our purview, be it Dr. Contreras or be it the board. We are not in control of the mask mandate that comes from the state of North Carolina. We were not in control of a lot of the return to school aspects that came from the state of North Carolina. So when you look at us and you say all of these things that you would like us to do and point out all these things that you're doing wrong, please let us communicate to you the origins of the decisions that are put to us to enforce before you tell us we're not doing our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, and then Anita.
Dr. Contreras, if I could just indulge you for a minute, when we were starting into the, the pandemic, you had the authority and the wisdom to shift the workforce in order to keep almost 90% of Guilford County's employees employed. Is that correct?
We did not lay off a single employee.
Your mic's not on, Dr. Contreras.
We did not lay off a single employee.
Okay. And you made that decision along with your staff?
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
Okay. And you didn't have to have emergency powers, but you, you used the power you had to make that decision, right?
That's right.
Okay. But it's not, okay, my point is, is that this woman is quite capable of doing what's in the best interest of the school district. And she's demonstrated that repeatedly. And that, that particular point that I wanted her to make is very important to me. We, we talk about the children, but understand that the children do not come into these school buildings by themselves. We have to have staff. And the fact that you started the, the lunch program two days after the shutdown, I mean, we didn't miss a beat. And so go back and look at the record of what we did not miss a beat. And we were the only agency in Guilford County that was feeding the volume of people that got fed. It was the children, but those children came and took those lunches and breakfasts home to their little brothers and sisters, their big brothers and sisters. But it was our staff that she guided, so that bus drivers stayed, you know, employed, custodians stayed employed, other staff, ACES staff, all these staff stayed employed. And then my last point has to do with the political pressure point. Even if the governor were to rescind the emergency powers, we do not need to have local authority, meaning this board, not being able to make decisions that are in the best interest of Guilford County schools. Because govern, the governor's gonna get pressure pointed at a whole nother level than what Guilford County needs. So we need to still be able to make local decisions as best we can, as, as Ms. Napper said. There are things that are being dictated to us that we have no control over. We, you know, we were told you will have summer school. Now, it wound up being a funded mandate, which usually mandates that we get from the, the state are unfunded. So at least, that was a funded mandate, but it gave our, our teachers and our staff no, no respite time. They had to turn around and start summer school 10 days after regular school started. And, and our folk, considering the year and a half they have had, they needed a break. And then they're gonna be expected to come back to school, what, 10 days after summer school ends? That's a lot. And so we, we're gonna see the repercussions of that, because people are gonna break down and they're gonna say, I can't come to work. And so our superintendents gotta be able to make a decision about how to fill the void that has happened because of the amount of pressure and work that's been put on our staff to do their jobs. So just realize that even if the state power is rescinded, we still need to be able to have local control.
Thank you, Anita.
I think we're missing the whole point. This has, this is not about the superintendent. We're trying to make it about the superintendent, but it isn't. It's about the board. And it's about this board and our legal responsibility. By law, we are responsible for the policies. Nobody has said, nobody has ever said that the superintendent has exceeded her authority. I've never said that about this policy. That's what you are trying to make it sound like, or it seems to be. But it's about this board and our responsibility as elected officials. Why can we not get that? There was an emergency. We said, okay, we'll get out of the way, do this. We did, she did. But we cannot continue as a board to abdicate our legal responsibility. Now, I mean, be that as it may, I've never said that anything was done wrong. All I'm saying is, we're responsible.
Deborah?
And Pat?
And you're correct. I've never heard that from you, but it comes, I don't know about anyone else, I won't speak for anyone else, but it comes across in a lot of my interviews. A lot of them, that we are, that there's been misuse, there has been abuse, there have been all of these problems. But no one is ever to, able to tell me exactly where or how or when those abuses have happened. And there again, as I just said, we are a fully functioning board. I, can, can you illustrate for me where we have lapsed in our responsibility? Because I, I genuinely, you know, you've been at this a lot longer than I have, and I genuinely want to know if we're missing something.
I'm not saying that anybody is, except policy is our legal responsibility.
I agree.
We had abdicated. In a time of need, we abdicated our responsibility and rightfully so.
I would ask the legal counsel, did, you can't abdicate something unless someone else takes that authority. So no one has created a policy outside of the board, is that correct?
Well, so here's what I would say about the debate. First of all, the actual motion only altered the, or only granted, sorry, only granted additional authority to the superintendent as it relates to dealing with COVID issues. So it wasn't broader than that. It wasn't, it didn't change po, the policy issues related to anything but COVID. That was the terms of the motion that you had. And so I don't know of any policy that has been suspended because of COVID.
Waive board policies is what the motion said.
Well,
As necessary.
As necessary to respond to COVID. I mean, it was very specific, if I recall. And so if you haven't actually waived policies to respond to COVID, then, I mean, that didn't take away the policymaking authority of the board. You could make a new policy tomorrow.
Well, we have.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't change your policymaking responsibilities. It just allowed the superintendent, in the event that it was necessary to respond to COVID, to waive policy. So an example would have been the opening and closing of school.
Yeah. She had that authority without this.
Right. But that's the kind of, I mean, as it relates to COVID, I, you know, it would be policy, you could waive policy as it relates to COVID as necessary to respond. That was what the motion was. And that's the only authority you've changed.
Okay. So I have to ask Nora, what policies have we waived as it relates to COVID?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
I forgot to turn it on. None that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
I give Pat.
Yeah, I, I just want to kind of go down that legal rabbit hole if we can, because I, I think it is important. And, and, you know, there's a lot of straw man arguments that get thrown around to sort of, I think certainly, maybe in the public, they take statements and then, you know, one week it's, they're in love with you and the next week, you know, they hate, so it has no, no one's, I mean, I seconded the motion that, that, you know, we give this very important action of the board to do so. It, the, the two are mutually exclusive. I mean, the policy and then our feelings and whatever, how we, we performed during COVID. And I think it was miraculous what was done, from the feeding to all of that, the devices, you name it. I mean, I'll be the first to say that, that the superintendent's staff did amazing job. But let me ask you it this way, it's more of a nuanced legal question. If the superintendent were to take action with this emergency power and a legal repercussion happened, because I know from the board training I've received that the board members get sued individually. So I want everybody to hear that. We can get sued sitting up here. It's all fun and games during campaign season, but I mean, that's, so I'm just curious, like, what would hap, you know, what is the legal, at that point, if the superintendent took an action and it was not board approved, how does that?
Yeah, you would not have any individual liability from any action that you did not intentionally do, knowing it was illegal. So you're not actually putting yourself in any legal peril by any of the kinds of things we're discussing. You don't have individual liability. You act as a board, you only act as a board. So the only time you have individual liability, personal liability, is if you act outside of the authority of the board and knowingly violate the law or something like that. I don't understand how that concept, I don't think that concept is anything you should be concerned about.
Also, to Ms. Wilson, if you could also just reiterate, your policy says, anything that's not in policy, the superintendent makes the decision about anyway. So most things in the district, I make decisions about outside of the board. So there's no individual liability. That's why school districts have superintendents. And this entire conversation is a continued reminder of why we have to do better with understanding board role, superintendent role. I heard someone stand right at the microphone tonight and say, why is the superintendent on the policy committee? She's not a member of the board. I am by state statute, the board secretary. It just shows we don't understand what the role of a superintendent is in a school district and what the, what board members do.
Thank you for that clarification, because, yeah, I didn't mean to say that. But I was just curious, because when you get into these really nuanced legal things where if an action was taken and it fell under the Emergency Powers Act and, and it went very badly, and so, so it is a, and then you would step up and defend us and it would be all good, you know, so.
I would defend you with honor.
With vigor.
And I would be quite convinced you would be fine.
Thank you.
Jill, hasn't the board been sued based on actions of employees?
The board is a collective body, is the entity to sue and be sued in the state of North Carolina. In other words, that, the Board of Education is the entity. There's no other entity. So yes, if, if the entity harms someone, the entity gets sued. That's different than saying Pat Tillman, in his individual capacity, gets sued. So certainly, I mean, if, let me give you an example of a wave of policy or a lack of a policy could get you sued. If you had no Title IX policy and you did not follow the dictates of Title IX, which is a federal law requiring you to respond to sexual harassment, if you had no processes and policies despite the fact that the law requires you to, and you had no policy in place, the Board of Education could be sued for failing to have a policy. That's one of the times I can think of where a policy, having one, not having one, using one, not using one, would get you sued.
But we're also vulnerable to the actions of our many employees.
Certainly, certainly.
So that doesn't, wouldn't preclude or prevent that?
Right, absolutely. But so anyway, the bottom line is your policies don't ordinarily result in, whether they are or aren't there, don't result in anything unless you've omitted to have a policy where you were legally required to have one. That has no relevance to this conversation.
Anita?
One more question. So the ESER funding that we voted on, what, last meeting or meeting before? I've lost track. That would have fallen under this, would it not have?
Well, the only motion said suspend the, the application of policy, so no. You, I mean, you approve a budget, but that's, that's an act that you do.
But ESER was approved outside the normal budget.
Right, because it's an extraordinary budget, but I don't think that has, I don't think that has any application to the suspension of policy.
Thank you.
Linda, and then we'll take a vote.
The ESER funds are grant funds. And I had asked, and so, had asked about why we didn't approve the ESER funds prior to submitting them to the state, since it was a grant. And when I read it, did not specify, you know, only local grants or state grants. So this was a federal grant. We have a policy that says the board will approve the application of a grant prior to it being submitted to the state. And that didn't happen. So my question is, is why did that not happen?
Customarily, I believe that is, if you're going to apply for a grant, it started, at least my understanding of that, is that when, for example, if you decided you wanted to create a magnet program, and you were going to apply for a grant to fund your magnet program, and it would involve, obviously, a commitment by the board to spend extensive funds in direction to support that grant. That's the reason that you approve grants in advance before they, sometimes you do them, frankly, they've been submitted and then you ratify them. You don't have to necessarily-
I'm just going by the policy.
But I know, ESER doesn't work that way. ESER, the determination of whether we got or didn't, I mean, I doubt if you would have turned down ESER funds, but we didn't, we didn't see, we didn't apply for ESER funds in the way that you think about that policy. At least it doesn't strike me as the kind of policy that that, the kind of funding that that policy is aimed at.
There again, I'm just stating what the policy, the grant policy says.
Right.
And I know that it was submitted prior to-
Right.
-board approval. So I'm just asking for clarification-
Right.
-as to why that policy did not hold.
Well, and I don't know the timing of any of who did what, but I can tell you that I don't view ESER funds as the, applying for a grant. That's a different, they are, it's not, it's not an application-based grant. It's just a, here's the money, how are you gonna spend it? As opposed to, we want the money and here are the things we're gonna do to support the program.
There again.
I will, if Pat will reword his friendly amendment.
Yes, I would just really use the superintendent's words. I think I'm getting this right, that once the governor here in North Carolina rescinds that emergency powers act, that we just move back into pre-COVID.
Instead of making that a friendly amendment, won't you make that the motion?
You'll have to withdraw yours.
I withdraw mine.
Yeah, I'll make that a substitute motion.
Okay.
Well, if you withdrew yours, then he can-
Well, if he's gonna make it a substituted-
Okay. I don't know if-
Just for clarification, we're under, what it is, is we're under a state of emergency. So what you would say is the powers would remain in place for so long as we continue to be in a state of emergency as declared by the governor.
And I would second that.
Thank you for cleaning that up.
Certainly. Certainly.
Okay, so that's, was seconded by Anita. All right, please vote. I believe I've captured the motion on the screen here. I see, so you've got the, okay, thank you. All right, well, that passes by, I mean, fails by a vote of five to three. Thank you. We are now at item B under Board Discussion, Key Performance Indicators Report. Ms. Sharp?
And the only reason I asked for that to be put on the agenda is, I think we need to get back to that, which is what is the important work of the board. And I would just like some kind of plan as to when we're going to start discussing KPIs again.
Your air mic's not.
Dr. Oakley and Dr. Stevens to come forward. I think as a quick reminder, the strategic plan ends this year, so we have to go back out and come up with new goals and targets as the first step. And I'll ask Dr. Oakley to give some context and then any questions you might have about KPIs. Certainly, some of the technical questions, research questions, Dr. Stevens can answer. And welcome to your first time before the board, Dr. Stevens.
Good evening, board members. So as Dr. Contreras mentioned, as part of our strategic plan, revised KPIs were presented to the board at its retreat on February 8th, less than five weeks before schools closed. And so we are in this reset period. Just like the rest of the country, we're going to need to reestablish baselines as this data comes in and as we learn more. Given the fact that most states, including ours, did not administer assessments in 2020, there is a data gap that does exist for that initial disrupted year. And all districts, including ours, had very low participation rates this past testing season. So we're, we're in a different place, but just like the rest of the country in terms of the data that we have and are going to continue to gather and analyze. Also important to note that the Council of Great City Schools is also in the process of reestablishing its KPIs, which we've also used as part of our lens when we enter that KPI process. So we're nearing the beginning of the new strategic planning process. We will continue to gather and analyze data. The current strategic plan runs through December of 2021. We typically use those goals to look at the KPIs and the areas we need to measure. We're going to need to decide, to decide, given these two disrupted years of learning, what's important to measure over the course of this next phase of strategic plan. But we're in the process now of, you know, gathering that preliminary data so that we can bring baseline data. Typically, the process has been, we have a retreat item where the board wrestles with the KPIs, looks at what the proposed goals are, asks questions, provides feedback, and then we put a revised version in front of you. The only last thing I'll remind us of, and we dealt with this in February of 2020 quite a bit, every time the state changes the assessment, if it's connected to our KPI, we then have to revise the KPI. So as an example, the state is shifting yet again, the early literacy assessment from IStation, formerly M-Class with DIBL's Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills and Text Reading and Comprehension. They dropped that two years ago, went to IStation. They're going back to Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills without the text reading comprehension piece. So that's a pendulum swing that will require, if we have a goal around early literacy, you know, that's just an example. And this is a renorming year, so reading scores are delayed. So there's just all of the complexity. But that's where we are with the gathering the initial data, and that's the plan for how we plan to present revised KPIs to the board.
Thank you. One question. Will we get, I mean, I don't know what they're, what value they have, but will we get the results of the testing that we did do this year at some point? I know it's.
We've technically done that September accountability report. It'll depend on when the state verifies that data. That's typically happened at our second meeting in September, so that'll depend on the state timeline because they've extended some windows like graduation requirements. So depending on when the state sets that verification date, that would, that would be when we would be able to share that.
Thank you.
And it will be helpful, but it won't be comparable.
Before the pandemic hit, were we on target in most of our KPIs and goals?
Well, we revised them February of 2020. So you'll remember that the prior year when we had test data, we increased test scores across subject areas across grade levels. So to that end, yes, but we never had a chance to measure the ones that were revised in February 2020.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking because we were on target. I mean, we, you know, we didn't jump off the train. COVID kicked us off the train. But prior to that, the train was running pretty good down the track, right?
Anytime a district increases across every subgroup in every content area, that's a really good indication that things are moving in the right direction.
And every grade level.
So we were doing a good job. Go ahead and give yourself the praise. We were doing a good job, right?
It, things were moving in the right direction. Yes, for sure. It's never good enough, you know. Gap still existed. We had other ways to go. But yes, we were, we were making progress.
Okay, but my point is, is that based on the work of the goals that we set and based on the implementation of various programs that superintendent and staff put in place, we were on track. And we probably would be all the way to Kansas by now if the pandemic hadn't happened, right? Right?
We would be in a better place than we are for sure if the pandemic hadn't happened. Yes.
Okay, so, so, so where we are now is simply what, in this recouping mode, in trying to recover what the pandemic has done with kicking us off the track, right? And we still are not back on the track, and we might not get totally back on the track for another year or so, right?
It's going to take a long time to recover the learning that was lost as a result.
It will take multiple years. The data is really bad.
Okay, but, but see, what, the reason why I'm asking that is because I don't want the expectations to be that because we're doing, the tutoring we're doing, which is a good thing, because we're doing summer school, because we start school back and we're full in person in September, that all of a sudden, by next testing year, voila, we're going to be okay. But that, you need to say that so that certain people who have expectations that, you know, you're supposed to just take that train and put it back on the track, it's not going to happen like that. But we're working it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we are now at reports, comments from the chair, and I have a few. Good evening and welcome. Congratulations to Rachel Clark, Justin Hardy, and Jackson Hicks for their recent recognition from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Rachel Clark from Southeast High was named the State Coach of the Year in Women's Basketball. Clark's team finished 31 and won their second state championship in a row when they shared the title with E. Smith after the championships were canceled by COVID-19. Northern High head coach Justin Hardy is the 2019-2020 State and Section III Coach of the Year in Wrestling. Coach Hardy led the Nighthawks to the 3A State Dual Team Title in 2019-2020, and the Nighthawks had their first individual state champion in school history during the 2020 Individual State Tournament. The male recipient of the 2021, I think this is the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Lacrosse Scholarship, is Jackson Hicks from Grimsley High School. Hicks was a member of the Varsity Lacrosse Team for three years at Grimsley, where he served as team captain his junior and senior seasons. Jackson will continue his lacrosse career at Brevard College, where he plans to study environmental science. Weaver Academy student James Early won gold in the Skills USA National Championship Competition in the Field of Information Technology Service. During the national competition, James and other students worked against the clock and each other, proving their expertise in occupations such as electronics, computer-aided drafting, precision machining, automotive welding, medical assisting, cosmetology, and culinary arts. We are extremely proud of James and his national first-place finish. And congratulations to Charles Parker, chorus and orchestra teacher at High Point Central, who was named the Arts Teacher of the Year by the High Points Arts Council. We are grateful for the many talented musicians who choose to share their gifts with our district. And this concludes my remarks. Dr. Contreras, we're now at Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, and good evening again. Congratulations to Dr. Nora Carr and the District Relations Team, which earned a remarkable 32 awards from the National School Public Relations Association. In addition to receiving one of only five gold medallion awards in the country, the team received seven Golden Achievement Awards, the most of any school district in the country, and we're so proud. Congratulations to you and the team. This week is the first week of Right Start Training for New Teachers. We are excited to welcome dozens of new teachers to our district and start them on their journey to transforming learning and life outcomes for our students. A second training will be held in August as we continue to hire teachers throughout the summer. And I thank Dr. Morrison and her team for doing everything they can to get teachers in the district. Students in 7th and 12th grades will need to receive their TDEP and MCB vaccines before the start of the upcoming school year. Please contact your health care provider or the Public Health Department to schedule an appointment now. Also, Cone Health will host a COVID-19 Vaccine Clinic at Doris Henderson Newcomer School on Thursday, July 15, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Please visit www.gilfordvaccination.com to schedule your appointment. If you wish to ride the bus next year and did not ride the bus last year, please complete a transportation request form, which is on our website at www.gcsnc.com. This is very, very important. Completing this form early will help our transportation staff with the complicated task of assigning bus routes, and will help parents and students have a smoother start to the school year. Please make sure you go online and fill out that form in a timely way. We are also proud to announce two more Guilford County schools were awarded Innovative Partnership Grants through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Fairview Elementary has been awarded 1.5 million over the next three years, and Doris Henderson Newcomer School has been awarded a total of 1.12 million over the next three years. With these funds, Fairview will enhance math and science literacy by expanding their work with STEAM, and newcomers will use the funds to increase access to wraparound services for students such as psychologists, medical, and dental professionals. Doris Henderson Newcomer School has also received a $40,000 grant from the American Library Association. The grant money will be used to update and expand the library collection to support the school's English language learners, providing access to eBooks and physical books. The funding will help create a dynamic library of books representing the languages, cultures, and experiences that resonate with our newcomer students. You may have seen that there was an accident on July 3rd where a car hit Weaver Academy when it went off the road. Our prayers go out to all the families involved. In an abundance of caution, we immediately secured and closed the building. Initial reports indicate the building and a written report also state there was no structural damage done, and the building is safe to occupy. Given the age of the facility built in 1980, repairs to the outside wall will require custom fabrication, however. Due to this requirement and availability of supplies, this could require work to be completed next summer, the summer of 2022. However, we would be able to wall off the area so students and staff are not affected. We do expect to be able to reopen the building prior to the start of school in August. Giving shipping delays regarding materials and the large size of the windows, we estimate that window repairs will take 14 to 16 weeks or more. Once we have a clear picture about what needs to be done, we will work with the school to set up a virtual meeting for parents to outline our plans and answer any questions they may have. Board members, please call Mrs. Henry if you have some questions about this. As we approach the beginning of a new school year, we want to remind parents and students that we were doing everything to make sure we have good air quality in our buildings. Over the course of the pandemic, more than 10,000 air filters were upgraded across the district. Every single school and administrative building received these upgrades as part of our COVID-19 prevention strategies, and will continue those efforts and continue to keep you updated on those efforts as we spin through the ESER funds. And a reminder to all students to keep reading this summer. Those who record at least 900 minutes of reading over the summer will receive a ticket to one of two attractions at Crusoe Valley, our generous community partner for this effort. Reading will help our students avoid further learning loss this summer and better prepare them for the classroom this fall. And I'd love to hear what you're reading. This concludes my remarks. I'd like to invite Dr. Salmon Hosi to come forward with Angie Henry to present our report on the district's cybersecurity efforts. And board members in advance, there are some questions we cannot answer publicly, and we'll just say that. And if there's more information you need, we can discuss it in closed session.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Contreras. My name is Candace Salmon Hosi, and I'm the Executive Director for Technology Services. Tonight, I'm going to share with you a PowerPoint, a presentation about cybersecurity and the state of cybersecurity in the United States, as well as in North Carolina, and what we're doing at a local level. Through the years, educational institutions have been targets for cyber criminals, especially K-12 environments. However, with the onset of COVID, there's been a dramatic increase in these attacks since schools have become more reliant upon technology to be used for not only instruction but communication in general. The transition from in-person learning to online learning has created opportunities for cyber criminals to expose weaknesses in infrastructures and create data breaches of different types of incidences. These cyber attacks have compelled school systems to step up their efforts to mitigate strategies for safety and security, but it's also increased the necessity for criteria to qualify for cybersecurity insurance. If you look here, this is an example of Baltimore County schools who were the victims of ransomware attack. But they're not the only ones, and it's becoming more and more prevalent. This is an example of a state, a graphical representation of the United States, and these are publicly disclosed K-12 environment cybersecurity attacks throughout the United States. And it's 1,180 to date from 2016, but these, keep in mind, are publicly disclosed. There are a lot of cybersecurity attacks that happen that are never talked about or made, made public. The following slide gives you an example of there's more than one type of cybersecurity attack. You have phishing attacks. Phishing attacks are, can be as simple as an email with a, with a link in it. You have data breaches, but the most common one that we hear about are ransomware attacks. And you can really probably think about the Colonial Pipeline that just recently happened. Other types of cybersecurity instances include DDoS attacks, which is where traffic is just bombarded on the network, and it brings the network down. Malware viruses, website defacement. But one of the ones, a type of cyber attack is a cyber invasion attack that you've probably heard about called Zoom bombing. And it's where uninvited guests crash a meeting, a virtual meeting or a classroom, that type of thing. So if you look at the next slide, what was really fascinating or interesting to me is at the end of last year in December, two forces came together. CISA, which is the U.S. Cybersecurity Infrastructure and Security Agency, and the FBI came together and joined forces to warn K-12 institutions that we really need to be on the lookout and be cognizant of targeted attacks from hackers. And these are some examples, some stats. 27% of victims of cyber attacks have to pay money to get their networks back up and running. 57% of these incidences are in the form of ransomware, and 13% of the incidences are repeated attacks on institutions and organizations. The following slide shows a graphical representation, a bar chart. And if you just look at between 2019 and 2020, you're going to see approximately a 22% increase in upticks of these types of attacks on school systems. I wanted to also incorporate a slide to bring it back home to North Carolina. So over the 2021 school year, you can look. These are public, or these are educational institutions that have been attacked in one year in North Carolina. So it really shows that we have to be very diligent in safeguarding our systems. An example of why it's so important to safeguard our system is this most recent attack in Broward County School System in Florida. They are the sixth-largest district in the United States. They have a budget of $4 billion and approximately 271,000 students. And a gang of criminal hackers came in, infiltrated their infrastructure, took their data, and held it for ransom. And that's why they call it ransomware, because they hold it until you pay them. They negotiated $40 million to get their data back. And that's significant. And I say all of this to say that we have to be very aware of how we ensure business continuity for our district, for the teaching and learning to continue and the business to continue. And I like this quote. It encompasses everything that we're doing currently and that we're focused on implementing. So I'll cover some of those. So our focus for business continuity is to ensure and allow for a safe, secure, dependable network to be supporting the business of the teaching and learning that has to happen and take place in our district. We're going to do that in a variety of ways, and we are doing that in a variety of ways. One very significant way is that we're instituting strong password management protocols. We're incorporating multi-factor authentication. We're forcing password resets. We're going to start that every 90 days with a certain criteria. For instance, it can't be the name of your puppy when you were a little child, for instance. We're instituting and have been regular backups and implementing a disaster recovery environment. We are focused on securing our endpoints. Endpoints are any device that connects to our network. For instance, if your cellphone in front of you is connected to the GCS network, that is an endpoint. An endpoint is an entryway into our network that can, if we don't have security systems in place, present a threat. And endpoint security comes in a variety of measures. It's not just one-size-fits-all. It's firewall, it's content filtering, it's network access, that type of thing. One of the key, key areas that is essential to ensuring business continuity for our district is creating an awareness, security awareness training, and addressing this through multiple avenues and approaches. These are some of the ways that we've started. Password protection is, of course, one of the biggest threats that we have. And that's why we are focused on ensuring, looking at ways to secure authentication, how a person signs on, how a person gets access to their data, their email, their files. And that is through multi-factor authentication. Multi-factor authentication, if you have an online banking account, it's very popular. This is not anything new. But according to some of the stats that I've been reading, it is 90% effective in safeguarding data. It's a two-part process, and it's a multi-layered sign-in that makes it a little more difficult for hackers to gain access to secure information. Multi-factor authentication, we've already implemented it with my technology department. 75 users, we were able to work out the kinks. And we have rolled it out with our school librarians and media coordinators. And that went well. Next Monday, we're going to start with the financial leads and the administrators in the school buildings. And then when teachers return in August, we're going to phase in by building, learning areas, building by building. So I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Diane, and then Kim.
Hi, I don't think I've met you before.
Nice to meet you.
The first question I have, on page four, you gave examples of the different kinds of incidents, okay? With the Colonial Pipeline, though, the federal government stepped in and bragged that they chased down the bad guys, found them, and got the money back. Would we get that kind of support?
Well, that's why we have cybersecurity insurance.
So is that a yes or no?
So I've not heard, I mean, I think we would have support. I don't know that they would go to the extreme of doing the negotiations and trying to get the money back. I think certainly there would be an investigation, but I don't think there would be the kind of support that the Colonial Pipeline received.
And it would also depend on the type of attack, whether ransomware or not. Every attack is different. Every...
Okay, well, I guess...
Or what they stole.
Okay, so at what level would we get SBI? Or would we be on our own to rely on Guilford County Sheriff's Department or City of Greensboro if we needed that kind of support? Will we get any of that kind of support? Is that something you can't talk about?
So I hope we don't ever have to find out, is what I'll say. So I don't know the answer to that. But we can find out what's happened in these other districts where they have had incidents and see if we can get that information.
Okay, don't you think it would be wise to at least have a conversation with our local law enforcement if we haven't?
It would begin with the insurance company and filing a claim. That would, and...
And we would start with local law enforcement, but like I said, well...
But as a proactive, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job, but as a proactive thing, since we don't know, you don't know what the capacity is of our local law enforcement, do you, to handle...
We do have some information from the Council of Gray City Schools. I can share that with you. I'm not certain it's appropriate to discuss openly, but I can share what I know about three or four of the largest districts in the country that have been through this and how law enforcement supported them and what the procedures were and the negotiations.
Right, and I wouldn't want to talk here about what our law enforcement agencies are capable of.
Okay, I'm just asking us to be proactive, that's all, as far as knowing what tools we have that support us. That was where I was coming from. And then on page eight, this, that's just as a point for me to ask you. One of our school districts this summer had at least two incidents where, because children were given devices, the kids then started emailing or talking to sexual predators. And, you know, part of what disturbed me was that in the news report, it kept saying, "Well, the child did this through their school device." Do we have any way of protecting or mitigating that happening since we have given out all these devices to our kids?
So, yeah, I mean, I don't want to go into details about what those are, but certainly we've got some strategies that are loaded onto our devices. Certainly, while students own our network, there are lots of protections. Once the student leaves our networks, there are additional protections. But unfortunately, there are some ways around those as well, depending on how the student acts with their device.
Okay, well, then let me ask this question to Ms. Wilson. How does that affect us if a kid uses a school-issued device and, you know, gets around us or whatever it is, and does get hurt or kidnapped or whatever? Are we liable in any way for that act, or is that on the kid and...
We have put in place reasonable measures to protect student safety, and that's what we're required to do. So we would not, I mean, people can sue you for anything.
I understand that.
But what I can tell you is that if we have put in place reasonable security measures, which we have, and if we have a policy that we inform students of about how to use our devices appropriately, which we have, then we should have no issue there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, then Anita.
Thank you so much for this report. It was very interesting to have this presentation tonight. In regard to the staff that you need, how many people work in your department to support Guilford County schools around, you know, all things, you know, cyber?
I have approximately 75 employees. But they're not all focused on cybersecurity. I have approximately three people who are focused on cybersecurity issues, account provisioning, user accounts, that type of thing.
Right. And is there opportunity for those staff members to develop the skills to move up into those areas and things like that?
Yes, absolutely. I'm a proponent of professional development for all of my staff members and creating a way of moving within.
I also want to note that as part of the cyber insurance, we have an annual review by our insurance vendor to review our procedures. And when I say policies, I don't mean board policies, but kind of our network policies.
Like an audit, the same way?
Yeah.
Okay. In regard to, are you thinking about any form of facial recognition in regard to students and getting online? Are we thinking about any level of that type of security? Because we do it all the time, I don't know, like on our phones and stuff like that.
No, not at this point in time.
Okay. That's pretty, just so you know, there's a lot of controversy around that.
I know, that's why.
And so that I think would take a lot of discussion. To your first question, I do encourage board members during your conferences with the National School Board Association, the Council of Gray City Schools. We tend to go to the academic sessions. There are quite a few sessions on cybersecurity and a lot of thinking about outsourcing that piece and trying to get more technical assistance into districts. Three people in a district with this many devices and this many employees just simply isn't inadequate, and we don't want to learn the hard way. So this is something we need to be thinking about right now. And it takes a lot more investigation, understanding. And I encourage us all to attend sessions wherever possible so that we're prepared to make the very best decisions we can on behalf of the district.
And finally, I do think that maybe for policy in regard to students and bullying, and that's part of cybersecurity as well. And I've had know-of incidents where kids are very savvy, and they know how to hack. So where are we in that regard? You know, have we had a lot of instances where we've had students hacking and things like that in Guilford County?
So I don't want to go into a lot of details about that kind of security and how we are preventing that.
I don't want to know so much how we are preventing it. I was just wondering, are our students that savvy?
We have savvy students. Some I would like to hire eventually.
Right, and that's what we said. We have some very talented students who did some naughty things that we really should be getting into our cybersecurity programs and eventually hiring.
Thank you.
Anita, Betty, then Pat.
So we have a cybersecurity insurance policy. So we get hacked, what's the first thing you do?
I investigate the hack to find out. My first, the first form of communication would be to learn about what is being considered a hack, because not all hacks are true hacks.
Okay, I was hoping you would say, call the insurance company, because they have the, we were talking about getting the city involved and the county involved in all this. That's the insurance company's responsibility, is it not?
Not all hacks are hacks.
No, not a, ransomed. Let's say we get ransomed.
My first step would be to learn about the data breach of whatever fashion or form that comes in. Sometimes what is perceived to be a breach may not, in fact, be a breach. So I would not want to call in all of the forces when it's not something... So if it is something that's serious, absolutely, I follow protocol, which would be to call Angie first, and then to contact the insurance company, contact our people, get all of the forces in play. But the first thing that I would do is to find out, is it, in fact, real?
Okay, what I'm trying to determine is what is the insurance company's role?
They would come in and investigate from their end. They would send in investigators to look at the forensics, the cyber forensics, and investigate the situation and follow their standards.
Okay, thank you.
Betty, and then Pat.
Looking at page seven, the cyber incidents. Just trying to find out, you may can't answer this question right now. The 2017 to 2018, is there a decline, a decrease in that? Can you explain that, or is this something we need to discuss later?
This is a map created by Douglas Levine, and he's dedicated, an advocate of creating an awareness for all school districts to understand and learn and be aware of incidents. This is, came from his website. And I would have to go back and research why the dip. And I did notice that when I created it, but I didn't, I'd have to get back with you on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Okay, good. Um, thank, thank you for the great presentation. And uh, I mean, it was really informative when I was flipping through this the other day, just to knowing that you hear about it nationwide, but not really thinking in terms of our school district. We, sometimes we, I think we feel pretty insulated and, and maybe protected in a false sense perhaps. Um, in terms of our tech partnerships, I'm talking hardware, you know, and the software. I know the Chromebooks are pretty robust and, and some of their just built-in um anti-malware and some of the virus ware. But what role and responsibility they have in terms of our arrangement with those folks, our software and tech providers? Or is it just all on us once we sign the contract and pay them?
So what did we get on the devices that would help us manage the security and?
With the devices, uh we partner with um we partner with Jant and both, well, we partner with the vendors that provide the mobile device management solution that we use, which allows us to manage those devices remotely, uh apply the software, apply the operating systems and keep the devices upgraded on whichever platform. We have uh multiple platforms within our district from different vendors. But it's the mobile device management solution that allows us to um to really hone in on those devices and, and manage them in an effective and efficient way.
Right, so the vendors, I mean, it sounds like they really don't have much of a dog in the fight. I mean, it, once we purchase those devices, we, we're using the software. Cause I know, I mean, just with my own kids and how, you know, it's, some of it's cloud-based and some of it's, yeah. I mean, I, I'm sure we're, I mean, obviously there's, we're sort of a, a gaping hole in some ways, I mean, with all of that. I just was curious about our vendor partnerships, if, what responsibility and/or protections that were, that were there?
Well, we have device type protections that are inherent with receiving and getting the device, the warranties. Is, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I was just curious. I, I hope, didn't mean to be like a trick question or anything, but, but um, but yeah, I, I was just curious about, I mean, we have, I know we have those arrangements and I was just curious if, 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 what role they had. Just my second question or really observation is, um, in terms of our training of our staff in the buildings? Because obviously that, I know you touched on it on some slides. What does that look like? How can we help? I mean, is there anything sort of, I guess, word related that would be helpful to you?
Well, I think this is a help is, any type of exposure that we can get to create an awareness of what's happening in society, what's happening with GCS is an opportunity for people to learn and become more aware. Uh, we are really trying to spread the word in multiple ways and um, and create an environment that people understand when they open an email or go and log into their account that they're doing it in a safe and uh, a safe fashion and, and best practices. So this multi-factor authentication that we're rolling out to all of the schools and all of the staff members is also giving us a renewed sense of an opportunity to work with key stakeholders, staff, parents, teachers, students, to, to create this awareness and, and bring, bring, shed more light on the fact that we, we all have to be careful when we're online.
And let me also add that a part of our Safe School modules that we have that, that all of our staff are required to participate in, and it's part, I mean, part of it's OSHA kind of things, part of it's, you know, other kind of Safe Schools things. We do have some uh cybersecurity awareness um included in that. Also, I, I'm so used to seeing it, I almost, you know, don't pay attention anymore. But there's, you know, we've, we've put posters throughout the district. I don't know if you've seen them about anti-phishing, just, just again, awareness and um just, just to help our employees and staff, you know, try to recognize something if they get it. So, I mean, we, we're trying to do awareness in lots of different ways.
Well, thanks for keeping us safe, appreciate it.
Kim?
In regard to um the drone technology, is that something that's also covered under cybersecurity and our financial systems as well?
I don't know that I understand that question.
Cause I'm just thinking about access to systems in regard. Like, is that also covered? Like, is that part of the cyber world? Like, we're gonna get the new software, like you're gonna upgrade and things like that? Is that also online? Like, how internally, right, internally?
Are you asking about the new CTE programs? The technology that'll be involved in those?
Right, either those kind of programming, like anything involved?
Yeah, the cybersecurity will cover, insurance will cover um that.
It's all inclusive?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you Diane?
Um, is, is the one, is, is the one card system any way connected to what you do, or is that another department? You know what I'm talking about?
It, yeah, it's a collaboration with our emergency management department and technology.
So was that a yes? Oh, okay, I just, because we, we're, we're investing in this other system over here that's supposed to help us track kids and, you know, when they're in class and do all of that. And I don't think we're up to full, full implementation yet, are we? Dr. Contreras? Okay, what I was asking was the one card, we're not up to full implementation, are we?
We will be, in fact, the principals have a presentation on this on the twenty-seventh. We've ordered all equipment for this. Uh, so the, the district will have all equipment, including the cameras, the scanning machines, everything they need to be fully operational for the fall. Uh, and the schools will be trained and they'll be planning for how to implement, especially in schools with multiple buildings, like a Grimsley, for example.
So I guess what my, but then my other question was, are you connected to that in some way?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's possible that our cyber system will then be able to monitor students, staff in some way, no?
I think, if you could explain a little bit the difference between the safety and security and the cyber. I think you're on the right track, but it's a little bit different.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you, if it's a secret, then it's a secret, but I'm just.
I just think it will take, it takes, um, it'd take a while to explain this. You're asking more about the technology for the safety and security, and she's speaking about the cybersecurity, which is a bit different.
Right.
We'd be glad to sit down and explain it.
Well, I don't want to, I know folks want to get out of here, so y'all can talk to me individually.
What we're talking about here are, are attacks on your network, on your home network, not on individual, it's not the individual pieces that you use to try to keep students and staff safe. It's, it's how you protect your home network.
The technology ball is bigger than, and that's why I was asking, how did this piece of that ball fit with your piece of the ball? Do you understand what I'm asking?
This cybersecurity that we're talking about, the way we protect our networks, will protect those networks as well.
All right, okay.
That data and information as well.
And then I just want to put a plug in, a, as you probably know, we, we have a, a robust CTE program specifically in the area of uh technology. And so I was just wondering if you might have an opportunity to work with uh Dr. Chillis and those folk to uh, you know, recruit, involve our own students cause it doesn't make any sense for us just to train these kids. And I understand some are very good uh already and not use them. I mean, there, here's an opportunity for us to employ, even if it's part-time or whatever. And I know there may be some restrictions because they're students, but just in the training opportunity, I, I would like to ask if you're aware of our CTE program? And if not, would you please take a look at it?
Yes, I am aware and Dr. Chillis and I have had those conversations.
Thank you. All right, if there are no more, oh, Linda, I'm sorry.
Mine's quick. Since we're getting the one card for the schools, what about, is the software gonna be on the buses? And the GPS on the buses, are we also getting all of that?
So it's already on the buses, the GPS devices are already on the buses. Um, students this year have been using their one cards on the buses to swipe. And so, um, and that feeds information into the Here Comes the Bus app. Um, so parents are able to, to see where the bus is located.
And that's gone pretty successful. I mean, we didn't have it before. When did, when did we implement that fully?
This past year is when we started using it for the buses. We've had the GPS on the buses for two years, but this is, this past year was when we started with the card swipe with the one card.
But to your point, not everyone fully used everything as they should.
Well, I just think that's very, especially with the challenges we're having with buses. You know, parents won't get like, you know, a little antsy about where's my kid? You know, I can see my kid is over here and I don't have to panic that, you know, the bus is just late. Or they can tell that kind of thing from this app, correct? That it's
Big, yes.
All right, cause you know, that was a big issue. But, well, also can tell parent, does it, is it able to tell parents that the bus will be there in five minutes or ten minutes?
It depends on how the, the parent sets the, sets the settings when they uh, uh, download the app, but it certainly has that capability.
Well, it's just good, great in the wintertime. I know that my son used uh an app at um Appalachian. And he could, he would, could tell exactly when that bus, how long out, two minutes, three minutes. And so he wouldn't go out to catch the bus until he saw it within. And having young children out there in the cold, we've had, you know, some concerns about that when it's been really cold. So if these parents can tell that, that bus is running late, we won't have children hopefully out there is, you know, in the cold too long. So I think it's great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, do you have a question?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you very much. I did have a question, but I think it's for Dr. Contreras because I, you know, this is part of the overall security of our district. And comments were made tonight and have been made. Uh, we had a meeting with the county commissioners and it seems like even the uh information that was shared there is still questioned. Um, but can you say um about the ten million dollars for security? Exactly where that went? And what it could cover?
Okay, we received sixty-three thousand dollars. The county then used five million of that for reopening.
Panda, pandemic related?
Pandemic related reopening. So it is true that of the ten million dollars of the safety money, we have received about five million, sixty-three thousand dollars. But they took five million dollars of the safety money for pandemic opening. That leaves us with four million, nine hundred thousand for actual safety. And we did not, um, I, I gave the timeline to the board members who were present and to, we sent it also to uh the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. There was a motion made, it was a year before they actually, what is the phrase, Ms. Henry?
Before they appropriated in a project ordinance.
Right, so a year passed. It was another four months after that before they then
That's where they did the project ordinance, the first, the, it was a year before they sold the two-thirds bonds and approved the issue of the two-thirds bonds. And then it was four months after that before they
It was fourteen months before any money was appropriated for the district. So there is no confusion about what happened or any of that. We know exactly what happened. The money, the two-thirds bonds were not approved for a year. And four months later, we, uh, that money was appropriated.
Only six hundred thousand.
Right, six hundred thousand, of which we spent sixty-three thousand. We are very clear on this point. And the district cannot spend money that is not appropriated to us. So to keep saying the district didn't spend the money, we can't spend money that is not given to us, that is not appropriated. That's the fact of the matter and it's in our minutes, it's in their records as well. If you look at their budget book, you can see how much they provided to the district for safety and security out of the two-third bonds. It is in black and white.
And I think if we got ten million, I was really surprised. I think it was one of the county commissioners who has some expertise in this area that um, that, that would barely cover a school?
I think it would, it would not, we're not, I think there's some uh thought that it would not cover the work that needs to be done to address the radio frequency issue in schools across the district. A ten million would not address all of the safety needs in one of our older schools. I, I, I'm not
Let alone a hundred and twenty.
Right.
Right, and the RF issue is once an emergency is in progress. It won't help us from keeping people out of the building, those sort of emergency issues. It's once there's a situation in progress, that's what the radio frequency will help us with.
Thank you, Diane?
Did we, did they tell us, did we know that they were taking the six million of the ten million and giving it to us for pandemic? Was that communicated to us?
They did.
Yeah, the five million, they told us it was two-thirds bonds.
But e, e, even though it was earmarked for security, safety and security, right?
Yes, they were very honest about that, but at the time, our priority was to reopen. So we weren't going to say, no, don't take that money, we needed to reopen.
Okay, but, but it's also very clear that we went ahead uh after we thought that they were going to approve this money and started doing the, those really um, what I call Band-Aid type efforts as far as uh putting uh door locks and buzzers on the front doors of, because at the time, when the incident happened at Smith, it was like fifty of our buildings, people could still just walk straight in, there was no, not even the minimum of a barrier. And so we went ahead and took care of that uh before the next school year, is that not correct?
So we
Went to Smith?
No, to, I mean, to the other schools that we had, that we had about fifty schools.
We've been addressing this for some time, but remember, we couldn't get to all the doors in all the schools. We don't have, we were never allocated appropriate money. We were also asked about the cameras and someone brought that up tonight. And for those of us who were at the meeting, you know, our question was, well, there's no way we could have upgraded the cameras and bought the cameras. The only way we can do that is if you allocate the funds to us. So I wasn't, I was unclear on the question because you can only, we can only purchase uh the safety and security measures if the county allocates the dollars under the capital outlay.
Okay, so will we, will we get the, what is, what's left? Are we going to get it? If so, when?
So I was told that um it could be appropriated on Thursday evening. I, I, I don't, I haven't had a guarantee of that, but I'm told it might, it may happen.
Pat?
Yeah, and I'm particularly sensitive to this topic because, you know, I kind of was trying to take the high road and then, you know, and then I was trying to call it out and then I kind of probably misspoke in, in the last news article. Some of you may have seen that, some of you may be thrown darts at, but anyway, the point is, you know, it's like, you, you can't say spend the money quickly and then we don't have the money. I mean, you can't have it both ways and that, that's really what I tried to articulate, might be not so artfully a few weeks ago. But the reason it's important is, and, and as I've said on numerous occasions to, to people that will listen or that will ask me is But the reason it's important is, and as I've said on numerous occasions to people that will listen or that will ask me is, it's based on these project ordinances. We have to, those, that's what releases the money. And so, yeah, I think even some county commissioners frankly were surprised that somewhere, someone was sort of playing hide the ball. I don't know, that's the old schoolyard term. And, and, and I think it really surprised a lot of people. And I think that's why it's kind of quieted back down, maybe. But thank you, Madam Chair, for, because we had a nice conversation the other day.
Yeah, no, you were great. I was just saying that that's out there in the, in the general public, Mr. Tillman, that we had the money and we got the money, and where is the money, and what'd we do with the money? And, and so just want to say it again.
And I, I just want to say too, that, you know, when we were asked how we wanted to spend the 10 million or what we, what we would use the 10 million for, we gave the county a list. And included in that list was access control. There were other things too, cameras and some other things were included. The radio frequency being one of the top priorities. But when we got the 5 million, it's just important to note that, I mean, we're spending a significant amount of that on access control. So even though it was given to us for reopening and reopening, I mean, access control or controlling access to the building certainly was part of keeping us safe during the pandemic. So, I mean, it was certainly an appropriate use of those dollars, but it's serving the dual purpose. So I just, I wanted people to hear that, that, that we are using a portion of those dollars for how we would have used, used them anyway.
Thank you. Anita?
Just a quick question. Will all of the schools have the OneCard this year, all the buses, all the schools?
All schools will have it, except for the early and middle colleges because they use the university IDs.
They'll, they'll have our OneCard as well. They'll have both.
Right, but they don't need it for swiping into the school.
Yeah, they can use it on the buses, though. They'll be able to use it, our OneCard on the buses. And, and all of our schools have had, have had the OneCards this year. It's just with the timing of when kids came to school. How they were distributed.
Did they also have the readers?
No, no.
All right, we are now at, we don't have another closed session, do we Jill?
Just personnel.
Okay, all right, Anita? Your, your mic's not on.
I move to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss confidential personnel matters protected by state law.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go into closed session. Are we staying here or are we going? Oh, we're going.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We are now back in open session and I will turn to Board Member Bellamy Smalls for motion.
Madam Chair, we can make a motion to make an addendum to the personnel report for administrative appointments for principal, school support officer, executive director, and senior executive director.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Dr. Contreras?
Thank you for your support. I'd like to place as principal of Faulkner Elementary, Olivia Bryce; the principal of Hunter Elementary, Trent Walton; the principal of Lindley Elementary, Kevin Smith; as the school support officer, Michelle Wolverton; as the executive director of emergency management, Mike Ritchie; as the senior executive director of student assignment, Rashad Slade. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations. We are now at board member comments and I will start with you, Ms. Ervey.
Oh, wow. No, of course, you know, you write down things and you think about things, you think about public comments. I'm glad that, you know, we have them back. And I hope that, you know, the public is happy about the opportunities to once again to come in to address the board, you know, and share their concerns. I'm just grateful that school is going to be opening and kids are going to be back in school. I'm looking forward to see some of the great implementations and things that are going to happen for students. You know, I just think that as a board member, it's just so important for us to put out good information and that we make sure that people are clear and understand, you know, what our roles are, what our roles are not. And that, you know, we heard a lot that, you know, I'm a taxpayer. And I just want to say we all are taxpayers, you know. There's no one exempt in this system for, you know, not being a taxpayer. So, and we are accountable. And I do believe in Guilford County schools and that's one reason why I actually ran for school board. And I believe in this work and it's important work. And it is work that requires a lot of integrity and it puts us in the spotlight. And it changes, I don't know about anyone else, but it just changes your whole life and how you are perceived and how you present yourself and all of those things. And it also enrolls, you know, like your family and everyone, you know, has access to you. So, it's just very important to me that the community that I serve, that they know that, you know, that I do represent you. And I do want to hear from you and I hope to hear from you even more and to be available to hear your concerns. And that we have a good superintendent. You know, you guys have a great superintendent here in Guilford County. We have a great superintendent. And I believe that even our board, we are a good board of people. We come from different perspectives. We bring different things to the table. And most importantly, I think as adults, we have to lead the way. We have to be examples. It's important to the students in Guilford County that they see us in a very good way. When I was in the ACES program, you know, I had the opportunity to expose children to different ideas and, you know, bring them information and books and things like that of different people and making sure that there is a well-rounded conversation happening. And our students have a lot of questions and they're very inquisitive. So, I have to say we have such a great opportunity as serving on this board and we have to be here for the right reason. And we have to, you know, we represent our district. Make sure that, you know, you're representing your district and the vote that you make. You vote something down, you're voting it down, you know, for your district. You don't want new buses, guess what? You're voting and you vote that down. You vote that down for your district and those that you represent and the students. And that's what we are saying. So, I take that very serious about how I vote and what it says, you know, as far as my representation. But I just want to say to everyone, thank you for the opportunity to work with you and to serve with you and to the staff and everyone. We know that we've been through a lot this year and you guys are doing a great job. And we are going to get better at this as we, you know, iron will sharpen iron. I believe that. And we have all the talent and the gifts that we need to be successful and to come out on top. And I'm just grateful for being a part of Guilford County School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go this way, Linda.
I want to say congratulations to all our coaches and especially I have to give a shout out to Rachel Clark at Southeast. Okay? And then I want to move on to a topic that's probably not going to be very favorable here, but I'm going to do it because I think parents need a voice. And parents do not give up their parental rights when their child crosses the threshold of a public school. I think I have said that to Nora before when I first came on this board. In the context of family law, parental rights are the parent's right to make important decisions and to take actions on behalf of their child or their children, which includes education, religion, and medical treatment. A court will interpret parental rights through the lens of the child's best interests. Parents have a right to know what their children are being taught. However, we have boards of education, National Education Association, the American Federation of Teachers have stated they will basically stomp on parental rights to move forward with critical race theory and critical pedagogy. In general, religion, socioeconomic status, sexual preference, health of a student should not be addressed in any manner, nor should topics of discussion be addressed in a manner that a student may feel singled out and possibly associated with a character perceived through the lesson to be a negative character. A main component of critical race theory is labeling human and social characteristics to identify victims and oppressors. CRT is not a basic component of education. It is a social theory that is taught in college and students, we hope, hopefully have a sound education to debate it. Young children are sponges. They do not have the base of knowledge, therefore will accept whatever is presented to them without question. Parents of every demographic should be concerned whether or not there is truly a positive outcome for all children, whether they are deemed victims or oppressors. We are, what are the positive outcomes of this initiative? Do we believe labeling children is a good thing? Current North Carolina law indicates that parents have a right to see curriculum being used in the district schools. A parent's first obligation to their child is to advocate for their best interest. If this is in the best interest of all children, where is the supporting evidence that all children will be seen in a positive light and lifted up to aspire to be anything they choose to be? Because parents, and if that is there, parents will never fight against it. And I have one more thing. Nikole Hannah-Jones, the 1619 Project quoted, "It is not history, it is journalism." Quoted. So, that's my take. And I feel like parents are being villainized because they have not been part of the conversation and they have not been, we have not, they're concerned and they have a right to ask questions and they have a right to know what's happening in their school. I'm not saying it's happening here, but I am saying for these organizations to say they don't believe, and everybody has their own views on what should be taught and what shouldn't be taught and when it should be taught. So, I think parents, we should not be villainizing parents that have concerns about this issue.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we talked a lot about safety this evening. We heard directly from the public. You know, we had a very healthy discussion about cybersecurity. And so, I'm glad that that topic is top of mind. And in that spirit of learning and growing and becoming more vigilant and safe, there's actually a back-to-school safety summit that's happening here in Greensboro. It's sponsored in part by the North Carolina Safer Schools and some other groups, but it's August the 2nd from 12:30 to 4:30 PM at the UNCG auditorium. You do need to register just so they can kind of have a head count. I'm going to, Nora, I'll send you the web link for that registration. And I'm going to put it out on my social media portal as well. But, so, I've got to look inside baseball because I'm on the board, but it's really unique in all the partnerships. And so, some of what the participants will hear, if you're able to participate, are the school justice partnerships, things like school resource officer training, school mental health services, the overlap of this state action plan with the task force on racial equity in the criminal justice system. It's, a lot of the legislative issues are going to be talked about, but that's from 12:30 to 4:30 on August the 2nd. And that's at UNCG auditorium. And again, I'll get that web link put out there so we can hopefully get it on GCS. And then there's another day that's really not open to the public, but where we get into the real mechanics and the details of the plan. But I think it's for the community, it really will share that multi-collaborative effort by the state to really commit themselves to safety and security. The second thing I wanted to lift up, and I was really surprised, I don't know if we've seen this, but the Fordham Institute recently did a really in-depth study on many of the state's history, essentially curriculum. And sadly, North Carolina was US history standards were ranked an F and our civics was a D minus. And so, you can look that up yourself. It's the Fordham Institute, the study they did on our US history standards. And I was really surprised. I mean, I have daughters that are taking, you know, A push as they call it and I'm following it. But in any event, North Carolina's new civics and US history standards are inadequate, writes the researchers. They cite nebulous verbiage and an aversion to specifics make them functionally contentless in many places. And organization is poor throughout. A complete revision is recommended before implementation. And the report goes on to list numerous examples. For instance, the authors argue that objectives for second grade are vague and in some cases too sophisticated for the age range, so it's not age appropriate, such as suggesting that students summarize the role of government in protecting freedom and equality of individuals in America. So, second grader, that might be a little over their head. But anyway, I just think it's important that we follow the State Board of Education and DPI on some of those standards because we don't create those. And so, you know, it's, I'm not, this is certainly not a Guilford County thing fault. It's just, I was, and maybe you've seen the study. In all studies, you know, we can sort of debate how they get there. But in any event, I hope that we'll just be paying close attention at the state level, particularly on this curriculum because we had a very poor showing according to this research. But again, I want to thank all my colleagues. It's great to see you all again. It's been a while since I've been sitting here. Thank you for all the work that's gone into the presentations we saw tonight on cybersecurity and the KPIs that we'll be seeing soon. And I just want to thank everybody. And to all the kids out there, please keep reading. Get off the screens, okay? I'm talking to my own kids right now. I'm sure they're watching. Yeah, get outside and do your reading. And what is it, if you read 900 minutes, there's some sort of award or something? Yeah. So, anyway, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Diane.
I'm going to risk taking my mask off to say what I have to say right now. Some of the comments from the speakers from the floor disturbed me. I think probably Anita, Dina, and I have served in public office longer than anybody else. And I have been a victim of threats. I have had ugly emails sent to me. I've been called names that I can't say because they get bleeped out. And I've been afraid to even go grocery shopping and had to avoid people because of the hatred and the misinformation. So, to question why we had added security tonight, if you have paid any attention to what's been going on in the United States over the last few years, the shootings where people are being gunned down, where they have just gone and found black people, shot them. Latino people, shot them. Jewish people, shot them. Now, you, I know you're going to say, that can't happen in Greensboro, North Carolina. It has happened here. It might have been 40 years ago, but it has happened. Just that we have obligation to protect our students, we have an obligation to protect our staff and your board. Because when I was, when I first sat on the city council, there was a shooting in East Louisville where a city council person, city manager, couple police officers were shot during a board meeting. Now, people need to, if they don't want us to respond to trying to protect ourselves, they shouldn't put out there the kinds of stuff that was put out there that raised the level. And I think that Dr. Carr and Dr. Contreras are tough-skinned enough that somebody just saying a little something didn't raise their level of concern. And if you don't think there are no crazy people in this country, watch the news tonight. There are people who have gone to extremes. And even though we got these nice men back here in these suits, they can't stop but one bullet at a time if somebody decided to do that. So, I think that we didn't act out of some sense of trying to show that we had money to waste. We would have rather not have had the level of security tonight if, you know, if that was possible. But people need to respect other people. And yes, you have a right to your First Amendment right. You have a right to your And yes, you have a right to your First Amendment right, you have a right to your Second Amendment right, you have a right to your Fifth Amendment right, but not to the expense of me and not to the expense of the people sitting in this room. And I probably wouldn't have said anything, but I've been a victim of this and I've almost become numb to it because I know, I expect that somebody's going to say something ugly to me because of some decisions that I've had to make. But I sit here because someone sent me. I'm not sitting here because I want to be here. Diane wants to be here. I sit here because I feel a sense of responsibility to be an active and responsible member of my community. And that includes our civic engagement and our civic involvement. Somebody has to make these decisions and you hopefully want some people who have good sense to make those decisions. So, I need to say that because I think that sometimes when people are being critical of us, they've never walked a day in our shoes. They've never been a teacher. They've never had to make the kinds of decisions that we sit up here and have to make, that you guys have had to make for the benefit of other people. Now, all of us in here have had the opportunity to sit at a graduation and see children that no one else thought had an opportunity to walk across that stage. But because of the effort that public school has put into all children, we've seen amazing things happen. And all I want people to do is respect the job that we have to do and stop being so cold and callous at judging what you think you think you know about why we sit up here and why Dr. Contreras and all of her staff are committed to doing what they do. I'm almost 70 years old and this is a critical time for me to see the fact that this country, I've lived through civil rights. I've lived through being called a colored girl, a negro, an Afro-American, African-American, a black girl. I've lived through all of those things. And I'm sad with where we are in America if we can't finally admit, America's got some real deep scars. But at the same time, America is one of the greatest nations in the world. So, there's this kind of oxymoron going on here, but we have to face our past if we intend to have a different outcome for the future of our children and America. I want to thank all of the staff for all that you have been doing because I don't think we thank you enough, we can't pay you enough, but that's the county, that ain't us. So, I just want to let you know that at least I can say thank you, but I do want to see us do more to recognize the people behind the scenes. And what I mean by that, I mean the people who are in the kitchens, the people who are cleaning our buildings, the people who are coming and painting, the people who are doing the physical labor, who are crawling up under the buses. I don't think we do enough to recognize those folk and I think we can do more to recognize them. And then my last point is about the virus. The virus has not gone anywhere, guys. The virus is still here. We've put safety precautions in place. We've gotten vaccines, but the virus is still here and it's still killing people. And we need to act like that going into this school year. We cannot be cavalier. We cannot fill our stadiums with fans and folk without taking the proper precautions. We cannot make sure that our staff have the appropriate PPEs and that we continue to be vigilant because the only way we're going to defeat this virus is by the very actions that we've taken so far to get us this far. So, we can't become lax about that. So, I ask us, and I mean, if you haven't taken the vaccine, I know some people say, well, I don't know what's in it. Well, you take a lot of things. You eat chicken nuggets, you don't know what's in them either. But at least we do know from science that the virus, it can't do you any worse harm than chicken nuggets can. Chicken nuggets make you fat. The virus at least might keep you alive. So, I implore everybody, that I realize I've gone over my time, Madam Chair, but it was just important to help people understand that we ain't playing up here. Each one of us takes what we're doing very seriously because we could be doing something else and probably having more fun at it. But we committed to doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
I'm going to jump around a little bit, but, you know, I've been here longer than any of you and I too have had threats, various sundry threats over the year, years, but I have never truly been afraid and I'm not truly afraid now. That was the last thing I was going to talk about, but I'll lead into that with, of the 17 or 18 speakers we had tonight, I lost count, but I think there were seven that made reference to threats against the superintendent and the board chair. I'm sorry, but I thought, I was just shocked because I thought this was confidential closed session material that we talked about last time. Apparently not. Apparently it is widespread knowledge. I was just, I'm just shocked at that and I had to say that. Also, Deana, voting on the consent agenda has changed. In the past, I've been able to vote yes on A, B, D, but not C. So, when did the board make that change and who forgot to tell me? And then a couple of, a couple of other things that have bothered me. The central office lobby in the boardroom were redecorated during COVID. And I'm sure that was in pieces, paid for in pieces, small enough to be legal. But I didn't know it was going to happen and if anybody up here on this podium knew it was going to happen, it would have been nice had they shared it with us. I was also disappointed that the SIR spending plan was sent to the state prior to the board approval. That's $300 million. That's a lot of money. And other than that, I'll end on a lighter note. Pat, if you really think your kids are watching this meeting, I need to talk to you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Well, I'll go back to my subject of the emails earlier where, you know, everybody likes to blast everything, that we do up here on the board and address all those who tell me I talk too much by saying tonight, honest to God, I just don't have the wind for a speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah Betty.
First, I'd like to thank the people who came out to make comments, whether it was negative or whether it was positive. To the positive ones, of course, we thank you for enlightening us and also approving everything we're doing and not only that, to uplifting us. To the ones that some would call negative, I hope you listen to our comments, listen to what's going on on the board and therefore I think that will more educate you exactly to what our duties are. I'm looking forward to meeting the new principals in District 7, to build a relationship with them and to also be a supportive assistant for them. We have a former Guilford County School student that plays for the San Francisco 49ers and this is closed to the public. It's only for Faulkner Elementary students. And on tomorrow, he will be giving out backpacks and school supplies at Faulkner. Once again, it is closed to the community, it's only open to Faulkner Elementary students. It is closed. As far as our students, we love all the students in Guilford County Schools. We are here to support you, to make sure you receive a highly qualified education and to also make sure you stay safe. To all the Guilford County School employees, whether you're paraprofessional or whether you have a degree, we thank you for all the work you have done and all the work you will do in the future. And with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Are you giving me a second chance?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Don't usually go in that direction. Anita, I have a correction. You were right about that. I was confused about what you were asking about since items weren't pulled off the agenda, but we have done that, allowed people to vote on each item on there. So, I apologize for that, for misunderstanding what you were asking tonight. I just want to say that, you know, the misinformation about, just about everything, we heard a mix of it tonight. And I just want to say again that critical race theory is an approach. It is not a curriculum. Any educator can deliver instruction in a way that is ineffective, that is misunderstood and that can be inappropriate and that's just happened over time. And it's unfortunate that we're not having a discussion about a thing that we're trying to ban, that we don't have conversation about what it is, but that, you know, the decisions that have been made in this country didn't, weren't just decisions made at that time and didn't end there. I want to read a couple of things. Benjamin Franklin said, "Why increase the sons of Africa by planting them in America where we have so fair an opportunity by excluding all blacks and tonnies of increasing the lovely white and red?" This came from an essay, you know, from him. This is a quote from him in 1751. Thomas Jefferson said, "I advanced it therefore as a suspicion only that the blacks, whether originally a distinct race or may distinct by time or circumstances, are inferior to the whites in the endowments of both body and mind." Abraham Lincoln says, "There is a physical difference between the white and the black races which I believe will forever forbid the two races living together. While they do remain together, there must be the position of superior and inferior and I as much as any man am in favor of having the superior position assigned to the white race." Now, who labeled who and who had the legal governmental power to institutionalize that for centuries? It is reckless and ridiculous to suggest that people want to harm white children to tell them that they're the oppressors. But when we do not give children the proper contextual information, how do they understand that neighborhoods that were redlined? I live in a neighborhood in 1936, the Homeowners Loan Corporation, which was a government-sponsored agency, issued redlining maps that said neighborhoods that were predominantly black were at risk that you don't make loans, you don't develop infrastructure and you don't build here. Three out of four neighborhoods that were redlined 80 years ago, such as my neighborhood, struggles economically today. And when they struggle economically, the schools suffer, the health suffers, public safety suffers, the value of the home suffer, access to food and transportation suffer. So, children absorb the images and the information around them and it doesn't matter what you say to them. So, if we don't interrupt the physical built environment that was built with race-based It was, and it was embedded in law for centuries. Civil rights laws passed in 1965. I was three. Fair Housing Law said that you couldn't do that in 1968. I was six. Largest redlining settlement in the history of the country, 2015. I was in my 50s. So, this didn't end just because Dr. Contreras is here, just because Mark Robinson is the Lieutenant Governor, just because Barack Obama was the President. This has been institutionalized and enshrined in law and critical race theory invites people to examine that intersection. And when we don't do that, it is children of color, black children, indigenous children, Mexican children, who have been given doll tests and asked them, which doll is pretty, which doll is nice, which doll is smart? And overwhelmingly, for a century, they have picked the white doll because they have internalized these messages. And lastly, Frederick Hoffman, I think I brought him up before. He was a leading statistician of his time in 1898, wrote a 330-page document on race traits and tendencies of the American Negro. He was a, he was a strong proponent of racial hierarchy and white supremacy and he went on to found the American Lung Association. At the time, it was the National Tuberculosis Association and the American Cancer Society. And Prudential hired him to justify not insuring or over-insuring black people. So, the Federal Housing Administration discriminated based on race. The military discriminated based on race. The educational system discriminated on the basis of race. And then to turn around and act like we're all equal now, that those laws fixed the damage, the glacial damage that had been done is absurd and it is misleading and it is making other children and white children feel bad not knowing the truth. So, I am in favor of having a conversation and examining this and finding the most appropriate ways to be honest about our past so that we can understand where we are and that we can chart a path going forward. So, those are my closing comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Of course not.
Good night. Thank you.